So moved to October 29.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Would you like to?
Yes ma'am. The only item that I'm bringing today for discussion is support for pending legislation in the House of Representatives. It's the move over law. This is being sponsored by Representative Jack Sarah, who is a former colleague of mine. He used to be the Director of the Belmont Jefferson Solid Waste District. And basically, what I've included everything for your reading and pleasure. And it's just basically to put a little bite into the law that as people approach, whether it's a trash truck, recycling truck, that they exercise cause or care and caution going around the trucks because the industry is ranked as one of the more dangerous that you can do because, you know, people don't pay attention. In our own case, most of the time, people rear-end our trucks. So, I reached out to Representative Sarah. All the big trash hauling companies have testified on their behalf. And I wanted to get this in front of the Board sooner than later, just so you could review it. I don't need any decisions today, but what I'm asking for, because we do have a number of trucks on the road, and this is important to our drivers, if we could draft up a letter of support and send it to Representative Sarah. It's my understanding this is stuck in committee for whatever reasons, but it's something that's really important to me because we're all about trying to make sure that our drivers are protected. And what we're going to do is on the new trucks, we're going to make sure that this decal is on the back. I've circled where it's going to be. Most of the time, they're small in the upper left-hand corner. We really want people to pay attention to the trucks. You know, we've really upped the safety features on the trucks, rear-view cameras, everything. So, if the Board would like, we'll draft it. Now that I know your timeframe, we'll put a rush on it, get it back to the Board for you to review, and then send it on its way.
Okay. Did you have questions or anything else come in?
I have one question on page 19 of the draft bill. Eve, they're adding this language, and I'm not sure what it means, and you might be able to tell me. It says, "The offense established under this section is a strict liability offense, and Section 2901.20 of the revised code does not apply. The designation of this offense is a strict liability offense shall not be construed to imply that any other offense for which there is no specified degree of culpability is not a strict liability offense."
You know, I'm really not sure, but I-
Hey, we can ask Denise.
Yeah. If anything, or I can, I've been emailing Representative Sarah's, I believe, office manager. I could email her and ask her about that.
Okay, because that's the only question. I think it's a wonderful idea.
Right.
We already have laws that require you move over if there's an emergency vehicle or police. So, this is just offending that and adding the recycled trucks.
Yeah.
The other question I have has to do with this picture.
Yes.
It looks like the bumper is further back than, it looks like the bumper's further back from the back.
Yeah, and that's only because the truck is much higher. So, if a car's gonna hit it, it's gonna hit the bumper. It's gonna go under.
It will. It won't. The windshield won't hit the-
No, we'll look at it when we get it, see if we can't move it back on the trucks. But they're, those are pictures of the first three. They're in Columbus right now being prepped. Dawn is working. This is a rendition, the second draft of the wraps that we're gonna have put on it, just so we stand out a little bit more. And then, we'll go from there.
Yeah, because that's worrisome. If a car, it appears to me, but I don't know how tall the truck is, it appears that if a car did hit, the windshield would hit into the truck.
Right, right. Yeah. I'll ask, I'll inquire when I get back. And that's all I really have.
Okay. Fred, did you have anything? Okay. All right, then, do we want to go ahead and request the draft of a letter subject to our approval?
Okay.
We get it?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll move back to our county commissioners.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners, and have a wonderful day.
You too.
It's gonna be a beautiful day. I tell ya, I love this weather for November.
You and me both. You and me both.
I hope it stays.
Should we do resolutions?
It'd be great. Yes, thank you.
Okay. I move to approve the Thursday, November 5, 2015 bills ACH payments as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I'll second the motion. We'll have a roll call. Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen? Yes.
Motion to approve the Thursday, November 5, 2015 wire transfers for health benefits as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I'll second the motion. All those in, we have a roll call, please.
Vicki? Yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Thursday, November 5, 2015 journal vouchers as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I'll second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicki? Yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Thursday, November 5, 2015 denounce certification as presented by the County Auditor.
I'll second. We'll have a roll call. Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the Tuesday, November 10, 2015 bills ACH payments as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I'll second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicki? Yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Tuesday, November 10, 2015 journal vouchers as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I'll second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicki? Yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Tuesday, November 10, 2015 denounce certification as presented by the County Auditor.
I'll second the motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to approve the Thursday, November 12, 2015 bills ACH payments as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I'll second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicki? Yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Thursday, November 12, 2015 wire transfers for health benefits as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I'll second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicki? Yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Thursday, November 12, 2015 journal vouchers as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I'll second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicki? Yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Thursday, November 12, 2015 denounce certification as presented by the County Auditor.
I'll second the motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to approve the Tuesday, November 17, 2015 bills ACH payments as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I'll second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicki? Yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Tuesday, November 17, 2015 journal vouchers as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I'll second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicki? Yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Tuesday, November 17, 2015 denounce certification as presented by the County Auditor.
I'll second the motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to approve the Thursday, November 19, 2015 bills ACH payments as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I'll second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicki? Yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Thursday, November 19, 2015 wire transfers for health benefits as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I'll second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicki? Yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Thursday, November 19, 2015 journal vouchers as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I'll second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicki? Yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Thursday, November 19, 2015 denounce certification as presented by the County Auditor.
I'll second the motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to approve the Tuesday, November 24, 2015 bills ACH payments as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I'll second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicki? Yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Tuesday, November 24, 2015 journal vouchers as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I'll second the motion. We'll have a roll call.
Vicki? Yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Tuesday, November 24, 2015 denounce certification as presented by the County Auditor.
I'll second the motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to accept the donation to the Office of Portage County Dog Warden.
I'll second the motion. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion for the general sewer and water agreement for the sanitary sewer and water improvements to the Cooper Creek subdivision Phase 1, Portage County Water Resources Department, project number BR-215-110-P.
I'll second the motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion to approve plans, specifications, estimate of cost, tentative assessment, and setting the date and time for the acceptance of bids for the construction of project number BR-212-140 Oakwood Acres subdivision sanitary improvements in the Portage County Sewer District, Brimfield Township.
I'll second the motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Since you're on such a great roll, would you like to go to the, add to your agenda?
Oh, sure.
We'll continue on.
Motion to approve the Tuesday, December 1, 2015 bills ACH payments as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I'll second the motion. We'll have a roll call, please.
Vicki? Yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Tuesday, December 1, 2015 journal vouchers as presented by the County Auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I'll second the motion. Is there discussion? We'll have a roll call.
Vicki? Yes. Kathleen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Tuesday, December 1, 2015 denounce certification as presented by the County Auditor.
I'll second the motion. Is there discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion for the Board of Commissioners sign the personnel action form accepting the resignation of Braden Hensley, Deputy Dog Warden for the Portage County Dog Warden, effective November 13, 2015, presented by Janet Kovik, interim Human Resources Director.
I'll second the motion. Is there discussion?
That should be journal entry?
Oh, okay. We'll do it, a journal entry. Okay, good. Thanks.
Is this next one a journal entry?
Yeah, probably.
Well, I don't need to read it then, right?
We'll have to prove it.
Okay. Board of Commissioners sign the personnel requisition authorizing the posting of the full-time permanent Deputy Dog Warden position in the Portage County Dog Warden. The Board of Commissioners further authorizes the internal posting for five days, and if no qualified applicants, external posting will be posted until filled, as presented by the Human Resources Interim Director, Janet Kovik.
I'll second them. We'll do a journal entry.
No, Jan said that didn't have to be posted for five days.
Okay.
Oh, well, how long does it have to be posted?
Tots filled.
Oh, no. This is posting, this is posting for five days internal before we post external. And then, if it's not filled internally, we post external until it's filled.
Okay.
Check with her to be sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I think maybe she thought it was only five days external.
Maybe.
So, I guess we know. We should hold the discussion items until Maureen is here. We could, let's see, it's only 4:10.
Oh, Julie said Maureen's here. Maureen's here? Oh, great.
Okay, we can go on to the discussion items now. I have two packets for Department of Budget and Financial Management. Do you know whether or not they're the same?
Well, the one has just three, and then the second one has a full packet.
Okay, okay. We'll sort it out.
The one was already in our packet, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think it was in yours. I gave you one early.
Oh, okay.
I thought I got one in my packet. I read it yesterday.
There was just emails.
Pardon?
I've got two agendas, and the first one has nine items, and the latest one has 11 items.
Yeah. Okay, I don't have the nine items. But the nine is just a-
This, I think you may have given me today, this one.
So, the 11?
Yeah, 11 is the current one.
Okay.
Okay.
That's this one.
Does Maureen, is Maureen coming? Do you know?
Our Board of Elections discussion should be interesting, Mike, so. You know, I'm still not quite sure what the problem was. I mean, I don't know.
I don't know that, I don't think they know exactly yet.
Good morning.
Good morning, Maureen. We just finished the resolutions, and we're ready to go on to discussion. We're gonna wait for you, so.
I love it. I've gotta raise this chair. Once I get down in here, I can get up. Okay. Excuse me.
We did the add to your agenda. Awesome.
Oh, you've done the add?
Yeah, yeah, it was mainly for resolutions.
Oh, my gosh, lots of resolutions.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're done with those.
I took this one home, and I'm hoping I didn't lose my discussions at home.
It's kind of reversible. There used to be some journal entries, and there's future entries, but many other things.
I have. I might. Okay, I got it.
Are you on discussion items?
Yes. We haven't started those yet, have we?
We'll get rid of the resolutions. Okay, I guess. First one is from Sanoco Logistics. Is this from Mr. Coop?
Yes.
Oh, and you had posed that, too. Go ahead.
Could we send a copy of this to Mary Greer if we haven't already? Because she was trying to get the information and had trouble. So, we asked for it, and this is what we've gotten in response, so enlighten me.
So, this will suffice for that?
Yeah.
Oh, and the next is from Todd. I had asked, when we were discussing the smaller resources, the breakdown of what companies were being served and the disposition of them, what happened with the companies, if they were. So, I have not looked at this. This was something to be considered for funding for next year, around $10,000.
Sure. Shall we just refer to Todd to bring forward when we do the budget discussions?
Sure, all right. If you just wanna review it, and then when we do finally talk with him, those two days about the budget, we can discuss that.
I think you just wanted to know how many Portage clients, Portage County clients-
Right, Portage County clients, and I thought by seeing the businesses and what they did, we'd have a pretty good understanding of the substance of what they're able to do.
You know, I was wondering. It said one was in Franklin Township, and I, you know, that's a very small area, and I was thinking, what was that? I don't know. I'm sure Todd would probably know.
I thought it says fine in Franklin Township.
Oh, five, okay. You know what? What was I reading then? Oh, it just said, okay, Franklin Township in the letter, yeah.
I think the main benefit of this organization, unlike the others, is they take people who are just fresh, first-time people going into business, who don't understand about a business plan, and they help them to write a business plan. Because so many new companies fail.
Fail, yes.
It's a really high percentage. And this way, if they write a business plan, they have a better chance. And then also, and I don't know if this organization's still doing this, but the original organization also gave them some consultant services. Like, there'll be an attorney that would be a member of the group, a finance director, a person that-
And this is free to the company?
It's free to the, it's really for first-time, I think, or brand-new companies, small companies that are starting, to see if we, and it used to have, we used to have an incubator connected to it, but they don't have that anymore. Now, it's just consultant service.
It's, I don't know if it would be a propensity fledgling companies, but companies that, I don't wanna say this, may not have a high likelihood of succeeding. So, again, I was interested in knowing the success rate.
Well, is that with this long-term over here, this number 17?
I'm not, I'm not real sure. I think it's probably gonna require a call to St. Mary. I know, is it something that contributes to it Medina?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we have NDS, and they assist small businesses. So, again, with the tightness of the budget, I just wanted to know whether it's, how worthy it is of funding, should just put it point-blank.
Maybe background, so you-
If this is long-term, which I think it is-
I think it is, too.
That's a really high success rate, 17 out of 38.
Right.
Yeah. I know when we met with them originally, it was last year, and we met with them with NDS, and we also had the Portage Development Board come in. We talked about the fact that many businesses, you know, they have a great idea, even startup, they don't really understand or have a business plan. And that's just a key to-
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I don't have to say that, so their services, I'm not sure they directly did that, they do that, provide the business plan. But there's some counseling services.
Yeah, I think they helped them write it.
Okay, so if you just, again, review that, and we'll consider it funding with the rest of the budget. The third item was the, the letter from the new, is it Jake John, the new Director of Neocap, talking about an appointment that we have. Currently, Dennis Lager serves and is interested in serving. There's an attorney though from Trumbull County. I don't know if Mr. John was asking that we, if that's for the same opening, and while Dennis is willing to, did you want to think about having any solicitation of anyone else within the county?
My question, Maureen, is when they're saying they need a Commissioner appointment, I think they're saying that it's all of the Commissioners appoint from all the counties, all five of them. Or is it Portage County?
Well, I thought from Portage County, but then they mentioned the Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office, this Stanley Elkins. And I didn't know if they wanted us to appoint him with our, our opening, if it's an opening, or he mentions both Dennis Lager and then this other gentleman. Kathleen, you're thinking that the other gentleman will be appointed by Trumbull County?
Well, I don't know if the appointment comes from the five Commissioners, as one appointment.
Yeah, I was unsure.
Maybe we could ask for clarification.
That would be-
Certainly, if it's our appointment, I would prefer Dennis Lager.
Agreed.
Yeah.
You know, the judges refer, obviously, heavily to Neocap. I wonder if, if any of them would be interested. Well, probably not. I answered that question.
Yeah. Who research to bring back?
Okay.
I think the last time we did was like 2013.
Oh.
I was looking, trying to find some.
Okay.
So, was John clear whether they're asking us to do this?
Yeah, give the clarification.
Yeah, we'll research it and bring it back.
Kathleen was asking for it, I think would be good. Okay, on to, next time, we'll move slowly over. Compared to the compared to the High Development Service, we have monitoring notice, reasonable planning.
You're gonna come in and look at everything.
Yeah, as they do. The others are information only, if you wanna look those over.
How have these gone in the past, Maureen, fairly well? Or how have these gone in the past fairly well? Is it fairly easy?
Well, I think it depends on the funding source and what they're, they're very, they can be very thorough, and they can be-
Yeah.
Depends, I guess, on where they are in the funding cycle, what they look at. And then, we always get a report.
Yeah.
If there's anything that would be, require a corrective action plan, we have to do that. But to answer your question, yes, I can't think of any that have kind of run awry in the sense that when they came in monitoring and said, "Okay, we're gonna shut you down."
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah, and we still, and the directors are still pretty close contact. The other information items are just those. Another one from Jack, any questions on those? Or two of them, actually, that Jack went on out. And then the Horizon's grant with Todd. I think Todd talked about that yesterday, but yes.
Only one journal, journal entries.
Yeah, that's what I said. It's kind of a reversal now, isn't it? We used to have quite a few journal entries, and we had very few resolutions.
Those two that not, those are journal entries, though, weren't they?
Yeah, we did.
Adam?
Yeah.
Okay. And you did these?
Yes.
We didn't vote on the journal entries.
No, we didn't.
Do you want to do up those now, or hold off until we?
I think we're probably okay with that.
Yeah, that's mostly, although we'll have DBFM as-
I just got one.
You know what? Maybe we should wait till after.
At least after.
And after Child and Family Services, too.
Oh, yes.
Did you wanna vote on the resolutions? Were you on the floor?
I just got on the floor not too long ago, but I-
Okay, so do you want to leave? You're absent, then?
Well, I prefer not to be absent because I'm here, but, and I don't wanna not vote on them.
If you were on the floor, just say you wanna vote.
Well, I was on the floor for a period of time. I was back in my office on the, I don't wanna do anything.
They were pretty routine, thanks.
They were. There wasn't anything out there.
I was talking with Bill, that's true, so he had just, he had just come out.
Did he show you those pictures?
He told me, he got pictures of the new trucks.
Yeah.
They're going to be, should help revolutionize the routes. Okay, I guess we can move on.
For Todd, huh?
And then, 11:30 is the launch?
Yes.
Now, the app has been, there's a revised two. Amy Cheka just sent it.
Oh, she sent a different one?
Well, it's just for the app.
You know, that was on the morning news, didn't it, this one?
That's nice, yeah.
There's R2.
Excuse me. I'll look at it. I have the other information.
Oh, we got it. I think we have to read something for that, so.
Pardon me. I thought I had this in a nice. Here is the revised. Once I get familiar with what's on here, then she revised it. Oh, my gosh. A few little articles.
It's a good article.
Oh, I didn't think, I didn't- Oh, I didn't think, I didn't know you were still...
We'll go through these items slowly and carefully. We apologize for not having them up sooner, but it was a crazy day.
Let me just pull up your packet here.
Is this the right one?
With the eleven on it.
Yes, eleven, yeah.
And this is kind of a repeat, but...
That was prior.
Yeah.
Okay.
The first item is the general fund, general fund budget resolution. You'll notice there is a line for moving money to the clerk's budget. Well, we can start at the top. The motor pool, thirty of that is for extra parts. They do need additional. And we talked about that in August. It looked like they were coming in high. They feel thirty more will get through the end of the year. The other thirty is for pieces and parts on the new sheriff's cruisers. We did two more, and so that's for those, two additional. The next item is the clerk of courts. If you wish to do that, that is in there. We can pull that out. The domestic relations line item, there was the grant, and we actually talked about them when Judge Berger was here, those grants to get various equipment. At the time, the local match would came out of their own budgets because they were general fund grants. And we indicated that, you know, we would, we would support if that caused problems at the end of the year. Domestic is having some issues with some materials and supplies purchases. So this would be the grant amount, and that would free up money for them to do.
You know, Todd, I just have a question on that eighty-five. Does that include the one and a half percent for next year? Is this just, you know, this year?
This is the, just, just this year, finished this year, correct, yeah.
I don't know, we talked about this yesterday in the budget hearing. We just, to sit here and approve eighty-five thousand dollars for increases is just very difficult to do before you get the rest of this year.
And that's where the other departments say that we enable this, but...
Well, yes, I mean, I understand.
It's hard to take that.
And the money that we get back offsets this, so that helps us.
Well, I think Joe had a great idea that they, they'll use future raises to absorb these back in.
Yeah.
So essentially, their employees got them earlier, but they're not necessarily getting more.
Right. I know that it's under her purview, but it, it almost seems to me that they would forego that one-point-five for this coming year because of those...
And I think she's, she's planning to use the one-point-five to absorb this year's. Oh, I thought, she's not going to give an additional one.
Oh, oh.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry, because I thought you said she really wanted that one.
She says she wanted it in her budget.
In the budget, but not...
She's not going to give raises.
It'll help absorb these overages, essentially.
Anywhere from, what, two percent all the way up to fifteen percent?
They vary, yeah.
Seven percent for one person.
And then the last item, the sheriff's department, that is for the two, two, that's the actual cars there.
Okay.
So motor pool are like the light bars and all, you know, the extras, and then that's the cars. So again, the board could alter this any way it wants, but that is what's before you.
Should I make the motion now?
To be all-inclusive?
Okay. I make a motion to amend the general fund 2015 annual appropriation resolution number fourteen-zero-nine-four-one, adopted December eleventh, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Any further discussion? And Todd, that money will come back to the general fund.
You need a journal entry accepting the...
We have to vote on this first.
Oh, yeah, vote on that, I'm sorry.
I have a favor to present to you, Maureen.
I want to roll call.
No, I just, yes, let's do a roll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes. I just wanted the reassurance that that...
Yes, if you do a journal entry, accepting and signing the journal entry, transferring from the title funds, I will have that sent to the auditor as well.
Should we do a journal entry?
I'll get to journal entries.
The next item is the non-general fund. A lot of last-minute items, but nothing particularly out of the ordinary. It's project, a grant, cleanups, and those. If you had any questions, I would be able to answer them.
Should I make the motion for the non-general fund? I make a motion to amend the non-general fund 2015 annual appropriation resolution number fourteen-dash-zero-nine-four-two, adopted December eleventh, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Number three is kind of good news. In reading further in the Ohio revise code, we do get to create a separate fund for our quarter percent sales tax increase.
Oh, that is good news.
It's going to be called zero-zero-two General Fund fifty-seven-thirty-nine-point-oh-two-six, which is the version we passed in under, and this is the resolution that does it.
It'll be easier to...
Much easier, much easier, no question.
To keep track of and to keep it straightened.
I make a motion...
I should break now. Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. I make a motion to create Fund zero-zero-zero-two General Fund five-seven-three-nine-point-oh-two-six.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
The fourth item is a transfer from the general fund to the job and family services. This is the audit finding, this is the last one. So that's the good news, at least.
I make a motion to transfer from Fund zero-zero-zero-one General Fund to Fund fourteen-ten Job and Family Services.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
The next is just a cash advance to the VAWA program. They're going to have expenses throughout the end of this year, but those expenses will be reimbursed, however, the reimbursement won't be, won't be received until January, February. So this is a cash advance for those expenses until that reimbursement comes.
Where is that?
A few pages.
Cash advance from zero-zero-one.
I think I found it, sorry. Motion to approve a cash advance from Fund zero-zero-zero-one General Fund to Fund fourteen-eighty Violence Against Women.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Now, on top of those expenses, there are going to be some expenses that go beyond the grant to the amount to the four thousand dollars. That would be a transfer from the general fund, which typically then we, we do a budget amendment, netting that from Dick's budget, which it does have room to do, and, and putting it to the transfer line so we can move it to the VAWA program.
I make a motion to transfer from Fund zero-zero-zero-one General Fund to Fund fourteen-eighty Violence Against Women.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Maureen?
And then seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven, if the board is willing, these would be, I guess you'd call them blank resolutions so that we could conduct the county in a business in case the board does not end up needing the rest of November. We would ask for one general fund. I actually don't see us using that, but who knows? Two non-general, there are always projects, et cetera, that come up. So I'd like to have two for those, a cash advance and a transfer.
And I don't have the resolutions.
You can read them. These, these don't, oh, they don't exist yet.
So should we have the resolutions too?
Typically, you have not. What happens is if we use them, I email you what we are doing. If the board doesn't want to, you don't have to.
Risky business, but I, but I would have the trust.
I'm uncomfortable doing it, but I think it's prudent because in case something happens, we're not here and we need to close out the books. But I would like to do it through a resolution. I think it would be important because if you don't have the resolution while we're all here to vote on it, we can't do this as a journal entry, I don't think.
No, these typically have been passed.
It would be a resolution.
Right, so, yeah, so we need to construct those resolutions. And then furthermore, could we put a cap on them?
You're, you're welcome to do whatever you want. You know, there's, the only problem with the cap, and I don't have a problem with it per se, but, you know, a, a road project or a sewer project could quickly balloon the thing, even though it's, you know, a small amount.
Could we put a cap on the general fund?
Absolutely, absolutely. Again, I'm hoping we don't even use the general fund.
I think we do need to do it with a resolution because otherwise it's not a formal action.
So you're thinking it has to be written out as a resolution?
Yeah, we need to write resolutions for the December thirtieth.
Have we ever done this before?
Yes, we have done.
Well, we do the blanks, we've, we've never, have we prepared them?
No.
I have.
We have done them.
We've done this, but we've not prepared them, that's what I think.
For extenuating circumstances.
We can come up with something.
The question that I have is if we don't have a formal resolution to vote on, we can't do this as a journal entry. We're not here to vote on it. So how do we enact, how do we enact this if we don't have? So I think we need to have the resolutions that state that.
How did you do it last year? The blanket.
I thought we asked for a resolution last year.
I said no.
No, typically, we've approved the verbiage. But there, there is, there is nothing to prepare yet.
Was, was it passed as a resolution?
Yes, they're passed as resolutions, but without, without...
But shouldn't we follow?
Without a piece of paper, I guess, is what I'm saying.
We need to have the resolutions. We don't have to have the details, but we need a resolution.
Could you not just make the resolution? You want a paper copy of something that...
Yes, with just a blank body, is what you're saying.
Yeah, just, we could say amendment to the general fund, et cetera, like up here.
But why can't we just have practice, Kathleen? Why are we changing it? Why can't we just do what we've done?
I don't, I don't care what happened in the past. What I'm trying to say is...
Well, you were here last year when that happened.
I'm saying, I thought we had a resolution last year, but regardless of what happened in the past. My point today is that you can't take formal action without having the proper document. This cannot be a journal entry.
No.
You could move to make, to pass a resolution that would grant blanket authority.
Exactly, that's what we need. We need that. We need that resolution.
We can bring, we can bring something back before the board adjourns today.
Can you bring it back before the end of the day?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so it'll just be a paper copy of...
And I think we need one for the general one, one, two for the non-generals.
Right, we'll do all five of those.
One in cash, and so be four, right? No, five.
Yes, yeah.
Five. And that one, there's a formal document that's going to prove...
Kathleen, I understand what you're saying. I guess my confusion is if we've always done it one way, why are we changing this year? I don't, I don't...
I don't think we have always done it. I don't remember that.
Amy? Todd, what's your recollection of last year?
I remember last year is the first year since I've been here that we did it. Last year was the first year. And I remember I raised the question last year. I was uncomfortable doing it.
Oh, and I understand that.
But I was willing because I think it's prudent.
I understand that.
I can check. Typically, Deb had brought these, all the extras, and I can see if she had placed fillers.
Probably because I have more continuous longevity. I can recall previous boards of granting a blanket resolution for, again, extenuating circumstances. So I don't know, so we had a hard copy. It was usually DBFM coming and asking. I could recall it with Audrey, with Todd, and I'm sure...
That's what I'm having a problem understanding. Why are we changing?
I think that just wants... A paper copy of what will be a blank.
Right.
And we can bring, we can bring something like that for you.
I guess, I don't know anything changes, but the important thing is that he has to have the authority, otherwise he cannot do it. We can't give authority with a journal entry. The only way we can give authority for a money transfer is through a resolution. He's asking for a blank resolution for each of these. We want to approve that in advance. So in case something comes up, we're not here or available, we can close the books at the end of the year. It sounds like a prudent thing to do, but we have to do it through a resolution.
Then we can do that. But she wants a paper copy of a blank.
That's what, that's what I'm not understanding. I understand why, what we're doing, and why we're doing it. I'm just not sure why we're making it.
Well, there'll be a paper copy.
Otherwise, it's only in the minutes that we set it, right?
Well, it'll be in the minutes, but the paper copy will be just that, a paper copy of a blank, I mean, it'll be blank. But it won't be blank, it will say exactly what we're talking about. So if, you can bring that back here.
Yes, we'll, we'll get something together.
All right.
Yep.
Is that all right?
Sure.
Okay.
For journal entries, we did have the one already for the ENPG. There's a six-hundred-and-thirty-dollar reimbursement request that the board needs to sign so we can submit it. And then we're adding the second one, acknowledging the transfer of funds from the auto-title fund as well.
Which is the second one?
The, the auto-title.
Oh, this one?
Yes, yes. Acknowledging receipt and signature on that.
Okay, so we have two journal entries. Is that okay, board? Do you want to add those to the two journal entries? Okay, the discussion of the EMA items?
Yeah, I was told to bring the three, three things back. One is if the board wanted to keep nine-one-one with EMA. It sounded like they had, you were going to talk to the sheriff about if he was okay with that.
I could not get ahold of the sheriff. I sent the message, but...
Okay, do we want to wait?
I'm ninety-nine percent sure the sheriff is not going to want it, but I mean...
You had said that you talked with him, so...
That's fine for me. I haven't talked with him.
That's fine for me. I, again, I share with you my concerns about how the planning...
That could be a journal entry, just to record it. The next item, though, would be a journal entry to authorize the creation of, what was the title?
Part-time or full-time?
If EM, if nine-one-one stays, it could be full-time, an EMA planner.
This is almost a blank resolution.
Well, the job description and hiring to post would come back to you. This would be saying, yes, go ahead and bring those pieces.
So this is the person that would be half nine-one-one?
There would be a third, well, the idea, yeah, all of them would do whatever came forward, yeah. But this would add a third employee to EMA's staff.
Right.
So I'm not clear, you have two?
One journal entry would be saying that the board wishes to keep nine-one-one work in the EMA department. A second journal entry would be needed, authorizing the creation of this job, which Ryan and probably Janet would then bring back to you a job description. And then you would also need authorized the posting, which we're not asking for right now.
Are we deciding full, we're not deciding full-time or part-time right now? Is that what you're saying? You are saying?
The, the idea was to go full-time if they kept the nine-one-one work. If you're not ready...
But to start it at part-time?
You are welcome to do whatever you would like.
No, I mean that...
The original idea was to do full-time.
Yeah, well, you don't, again, I share with you.
If, if nine-one-one stayed.
I think the news advised to start at part-time, and then they will probably build it full-time. They're going to keep track of the hours.
The nine-one-one work itself would only be part-time. Ryan, Ryan received more grant money from the ENPG. The grant itself would support a person at thirty hours. Yeah, thirty hours. If they take on the nine-one-one work, that would, the hours they work If they take on the 911 work, that would, the hours they work would essentially free up enough money to cover that other ten hours and make the person full-time. So the idea was he already has thirty hours of EMPG work he would like to do. If, if there were ten to twenty hours of 911. Ryan, Ryan, yes. And the grant, the EMPG grant covers that increase all by itself. If the 911 work comes, there will also be 911 funds then to cover those hours. That additional funding would allow this position to go to full-time. But the, the 911.
So there's the potential, whether or not we want it.
Yeah, the 911 work itself would still only be a part-time role to, to each of them in the department.
Tom, when would we lose this money? I mean, would we lose this money right away if we decided to go part-time and then maybe?
There's always, the state's the state. But the state changed its funding formula. And what it indicated was we're going to take your past five-year averages and that's now what you're going to get at a minimum. So.
That's how he got more money, right?
Yes, because our five, you know, three years ago we were very high. So the idea is this will be our new grant amount. The, the trade-off was that the state is no longer doing any of the supplemental. Used to be apply for supplemental fund in case you wanted more. So in theory, this is our new amount. Now, in the new binding budget, could it be changed? Absolutely. From what we've received so far, this is what we're planning off of.
And otherwise, who's money? I think what threw me a curve is what I explained, and we were in executive session, but Ryan had originally asked for a consultant to do the plan. And we were going to do that. Then Ryan came, and again, I'm assuming he came to both you also. He came in to see me one day and he said, Maureen, I would prefer to do the plan myself. And I thought, great, that was what I would have preferred originally, to have the director do that. But, so I would, I would like to not, well, he didn't say not use the consultant, but I'd like to do it myself. So I, I thought, fine, that's good. But now, it's a little bit of a change because he's saying, I need a planner to do the plan. Right. So to me, that's a little departure from what he had told me. However, if, I would assume it's essential to have another third employee at EMA. That was not my desire to do that, but I'm, I'm thinking more in sustainability. I suppose if we don't get the funds from EMA, then we're looking at a potential layoff.
And typically in grant employees, we do put wording that employment is subject to funding. On which I, I.
I just don't want it to go back to the general fund. Right. So all that having been said, if you want to proceed with a journal entry or a resolution for this to go forward, to use that, I mean, that's fine. And you know, I do think we need clarification because I thought that Ryan had said this new person is going to do some 911 work and some planning.
Correct.
Yesterday after the meeting, he said he and Patty were going to do all the 911.
No, I didn't hear that, but we can clarify it.
Yeah, we need to do that.
But what I thought he said was that all three would be doing some.
And that's what I thought in our meeting. But then after our meeting, that's not what he said, so I'm not sure. We need to clarify that. Alright.
I think until we get another person added in here, the only two.
So do you want to proceed with this or is Ryan coming? Yes, he's coming today. Also, Todd, we want to, you know, do that, we want to really get involved in that lane thing. Because we all went to classes and we're thinking that you need to take over the financial part. That you can, that makes sense.
Okay.
From EMA, that'll free Patty up to do more 911 work or EMA work or whatever work there is.
Okay.
So we need to start looking into that. We'll talk about that later because we have current staff who I think could really shoulder that responsibility. Now, whether they can with their other duties, but the fact is, you are absolutely right. And that's a priority for me. Let's utilize. Todd has touched on that before. Let's utilize that to the max.
Okay.
Otherwise, we're never going to change any systems that may be inadequate or can be improved. Okay, that was a digression, but alright, so do we want to do this now? We don't know, we're going to talk to Ryan.
We, we'll hold that one till Ryan comes. And then the third item was if 911 stays, that would have you approving Patty's job description at the DAP four level?
Yeah.
You wanted to do a journal entry, or you could wait for Ryan. I didn't know Ryan was coming today.
I, I think she is going to be doing both of that. Both EMA and.
Yes, since you've kept the 911. We were on, was it yesterday? We weren't sure. And Maureen had wanted to talk to the sheriff. So if 911 stays, that would be the DAP four job description that you would want to approve.
So are you personally going ahead with that? Yes, yes. So we add that to the journal. 911 as well. Stay under EMA.
Okay.
And should we do a journal entry that we're going to keep 911 in EMA?
She has that one.
She has that one. That one was that.
So you've got, you've got one keeping 911. You've got one approving Patty at the DAP four.
Yes.
And then the, the third employee we're holding for Ryan.
It's dependent upon.
Is that correct? Okay. Alright, thank you.
And you will bring those paper copies?
Absolutely, we'll get that up here before you guys are ready to go. And we'll do that if I don't.
Thank you.
If I don't remember, have a safe and wonderful trip.
Oh, thank you so, I'll see you more today.
Hopefully, hopefully. Well, yeah, we're kind of, I don't know if I have a chance to speak though. And Maureen, best of luck to you next week. Kathleen, you have a good weekend.
When the board of elections are up here, you're going to be up here.
Yes. I'll be hiding in the corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Todd. Okay, we can move on to, to the official launch, I suppose.
Yeah, maybe see if four of elections can go up.
You know, why don't you see things come up early? Yeah, that'd be great. Because the official launch isn't until eleven thirty. So yeah.
It's only out there.
Yeah, I know. So we're an hour ahead.
Should we ask Todd to come back then?
Well, yeah. He, he needs to be here when the board of elections are here, let me tell you.
We might be able to do family and community services stuff too this morning. If we have time.
That would be good. That would be very good. Do, do either of you have that app, the new app on your cellphone?
I think I do.
I do?
I don't have it with me, but it's on my purse.
I was looking at it this morning. There's not a lot on there, but, but there's, there is a big. Did you hear on the news this morning? It was announced on TV. I thought that was kind of cool. Yeah, well, I think the, the fact that we're the first is quite a accomplishment. Yes. I thought after that election thing, we needed something like that now. So Mike, you were there. I know you recorded in this morning's paper. Nothing like that has ever happened before that you know of.
Now, the last time they've had any comparable glitch Kathleen is familiar with back in seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine.
That was your election, right Kathleen?
Yeah. And that was a total flop of the numbers. They switched winners and losers.
Yeah, that's what I read, yeah, okay.
So the, they haven't had anything like that where the computer just didn't talk to itself.
The amazing thing is they tested it twice.
Right, right, right.
It was, it was working on other things that they had done. Because they had scanned in the results from the, from the, the hand ballots. And that had transferred over five. It was when they were starting to actually download the cards from the touchscreen system. It wasn't taking the information. It recognized each side of the, you know, the machines and the server, but it wasn't accepting any information.
It's amazing.
They didn't know if it was hardware or a software problem. I don't know that they still have it resolved.
Well, according to this morning's paper, they didn't, but then something may have happened since papers went to print, so who knows?
Well, they were, they had, they were burning up the phones and they had a vendor tech. He's always there for elections, but you know, they were sweating. It just wasn't working.
They can come, but in about ten minutes. Okay, great. Do you want to recess or?
Yeah, that is the prosecutor.
I didn't get the prosecutor thing. What do you say?
This is the prosecutor's. Oh, yeah, I did get it.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I read that. Yeah, I read that.
It's just for information, right?
Yes.
Now, Amy Cheka just said, is there any possibility that we can put up the application banner behind where our speakers will be talking today?
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
And how would it be a fix to law?
Amy is so thin, so detailed.
Or we could open this up and have it projected on there, maybe.
Well, do we have it?
No.
Is it coming? Is it going to put it up?
Yes.
I'll tell you, Amy's a good person to have on the team. And all her work as volunteer. The beef bucks. Yeah, she should get, get recognition too. I have coined a new word for this, well, I guess I have coined it for this press release. I'm calling it the Portage-centric. Meaning revolving around Portage company.
Okay. Do you want to recess for a minute?
Sure. By the way, I did follow up on that at the time. The MBS said they weren't aware that that was at that stage or going forward. Right after we talked. But which may, led me back to, I wonder about the going ahead with reconfiguring downstairs because you both thought that that might be doable, feasible.
Well, I think that there are several options. And many of those are things that we're going to talk about today.
Oh, alright.
If that's okay.
Sure, no, that's fine. I didn't.
So, um.
But is, we're going to wait for Todd to come up?
Oh, sure.
Do you have any live material?
Well, there's a packet coming up, Kathleen. I thought, I thought it'd be easier just to give everybody some historical stuff that it already presented in the previous because it's probably not in full version. I mean, why would it be?
Well, we had provided, when we initially submitted our budget request for 2016, we had provided.
We have that.
Yeah, so.
I need my budget. I hope mine is here.
And Maureen, when we were chatting the other day, you had asked for a copy of the statute that deals with the election. Revenue funds?
Yes, thank you.
You're most welcome.
Thank you.
Kathleen, can I ask you?
Sure. I'm afraid I'm going to have to go back and get my list of.
Oh, he's going to Craig.
I knew we were going to have this today, so I didn't, I didn't send out a paper. Page two, twenty-six. Thank you for coming up early.
Sure.
It's so pretty. I don't know if I was supposed to be.
I was telling them yesterday afternoon after a long session, let's go out, get on the tractor, go brush off. You don't have to fish, you don't have to do anything. All you have to do is leave this sort of.
Alright. Are you ready?
We are ready.
Alright.
We are ready.
Okay, so the Board of Elections is the protector of Portage County citizens' right to vote. It is our job to ensure the integrity of our voting system. We have, we have a great staff. All of our staff work twenty-four plus hours, Tuesday to Wednesday, making sure that we were able to put forth election results in a timely, as soon as we could. It's a very stressful job. No other departments work like ours. We have always been cognizant of the budget, our budget, as well as the budget for the county. We have returned over half, almost a half a million dollars to the county between the years 2009 and 2014. That is money that we could easily have used to buy or rent new equipment. We also bring money into the county in the form of chargebacks, filing fees, and other reimbursements. From 2011 through 2014, we have brought to the county over $700,000 in chargeback fees alone. If you add those two dollar amounts together, that is more than the 1.2 million dollars that we've asked for in our budget to buy new equipment. We have, as I indicated, we've been a good steward of our money and your money. We are generally here to talk about, well, there are several items. I'm going to have Faith address the equipment issue. Or Faith is going to address, I'm not having, sorry. We're going to, we need to talk about our postage allocation as well as raises for our staff and our, and our space issues.
As you are, are well aware of, on Tuesday, we did suffer a malfunction of our voting equipment. This unfortunately is one of many malfunctions we've been afraid of over the years that could potentially happen. When we purchased our voting equipment in 2004, going into 2005, we actually first used our equipment in November 2005. It has been well made public and aware that the life expectancy of electronic voting machines is five to seven years. We currently are in the tenth year of using our equipment. This election is, it was November of 2015. The first time we used our equipment was November 2005. So we're at exactly ten years of usage. We currently have equipment that is outdated. There are no brand-new replacement pieces to it. Anything that we purchase is stock items that they have had from the time that they stopped production on this equipment or refurbished items. We are still working on repairs with our vendor on the equipment that we are using. We had some individuals from their office in yesterday. We're going to have other technicians coming in to help remedy the situation. The problem is, we don't know how reliable this remedy is going to be. We will be able to tabulate votes, but we don't know, is this the first of many more incidents to come?
It's unacceptable.
It is. It's, it's not acceptable for our county, but most certainly not for our citizens and the voters. Their faith in the voting process is what's most important. And I think many have questions as to, to the process of voting and the sanctity of their vote. And that is something that we seriously do not want to have. We work very hard to secure everyone's vote. Right now, when you look at our figures, we have put into the budget two different line options. We have, with most vendors now, you can either purchase voting equipment outright or you can lease voting equipment for periods of years. We are proposing new equipment. Our goal is for new equipment. Next year is the presidential election. We cannot have a malfunction in a presidential year. The voting numbers will increase. We had a very large turnout this election. It's close to a presidential, but a presidential is a larger turnout. What we are asking for the commissioners to do is to review the budget items that were, I might add, a part of our 2016 request. But when we received the budget proposal after cuts were made, both lines were cut for voting equipment. And those were lines 420000, professional and technical services. That was a $400,000 allocation. That's for a lease option potential. We also had under item six, capital outlets, line 630000, just over 1.2 million for a outright purchase. Both of those items were cut from the proposal that we received from the budget office. And the proposal that we received coming here today, they are no longer there. So we are asking the commissioners to now include those lines or one or the other back so that we can begin the process of purchasing or leasing new equipment immediately.
Well, those were cut, they're moved to the capital budget. We had discussed that and in fact, we talked about whether they should be in the capital budget for sixteen or later. It's clear now you would like them in sixteen.
Absolutely.
That wasn't always a conversation. But that money is there. I mean, you guys can, whenever you're ready to proceed with the equipment.
It wasn't taken.
We proceed.
Well, I may, as chair of the board, I appreciate what, what you said. I want to emphasize that we have a March primary, not a May primary next year, which puts considerable constraints on our department. We, we have to, one, train our staff. And then we have to train all of those wonderful people who go out for the polls. We're talking about an entirely different voting system. You're talking about basically an optical scan as opposed to touchscreen. So it's, you're recreating the wheel with reference to training. Number two, based upon the ability of equipment, and we're not sure what it is, is our view that we must immediately proceed with contacting vendors. We cannot wait until January one because that would be an impossibility to enter the contracts, to get the equipment, to begin to, in fact, program. And Faith tells me that we have to start programming in December for a March primary. And you've got to program it on the equipment.
We're ready to go, is what I'm saying.
I think also that you have scheduled vendors to come in.
For, that's for the electronic poll books.
That's different.
That is different.
That's different.
Right. And that's the one that has the 85% match from the state. What we're talking about here is completely different. This is, there's no money coming from the state or the federal government, but it is an outlay that needs to be made. We are not confident with, of.
You're saying you have the equipment in place in December, no later than December.
We've got to work on it.
Yeah.
Well, the money is there, though. I think, the question, the money is there. And given what you have experienced, no one wants to have that happen again, no much. So I would imagine you can go forward.
All right.
Do you know if you are going planning to lease or to purchase at this time?
We have to talk, I think we need to talk with the vendors about their various, what is the difference between leasing versus purchasing? And there are, I think we're leaning towards leasing. Because of the, that way you don't have surprise costs with upgrades. If you get to the end of the life of that, of those machines, you're not stuck with, you know.
Absolutely.
Exactly. A hundred.
Diebold, I mean, in essence.
Well, Diebold actually sold their company to ESNS.
What is it?
Diebold was our original vendor.
What is the new company's name?
We are currently with Dominion Voting.
What is the name of, of Diebold sold to whom?
Diebold sold to ESNS.
Okay.
And from, when ESNS made that initial purchase, there was a federal lawsuit for antitrust. Based on the outcome of that antitrust suit, Diebold and, Diebold was no longer a player, ESNS, they broke off into Premier Voting's equipment to cover the Diebold side of the business, and then Dominion Voting split the business with them. So Diebold and, excuse me, Dominion and Premier are now the owners of that equipment, and we are with the Dominion side of that equipment.
And the Premier side is the Diebold's part?
The Premier side is ESNS. It's an offshoot of ESNS.
We don't want to do that again. No, 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 I'm not laughing at it, no.
Unfortunately, you never know what's going to happen. Unfortunately, voting equipment is something, when we started HAVA, I was with the Secretary of State's office at the time, there were easily 15 to 20 companies that produced and manufactured voting equipment. HAVA really shrunk that market down to where now you have about five companies in the country. And it's a survival of the fittest. Who can afford to manufacture, keep up with federal standards and requirements, and go through testing? What happened with Dominion was unfortunate. Nobody could have seen that happening. But we have received good service from all of our owning, managing companies since Diebold.
So you'll have the vendors in and then make a finite decision on whether it's a lease or just, again, associated with voting equipment. I'm thinking lease is probably the most.
That's what I'm thinking also.
It's definitely a smaller annual.
And lease is also better for the county, I think, financially with the outlay. It's not an upfront million-dollar outlay. It also, as Terry had said, it does cover upgrades. If there are software changes, hardware changes, that is included in a lease. But outside of the purchase or a lease for equipment, we do need to remind you, much as, I know, Maureen, you may recall this, when we did make the initial purchase back in 2005, there are still additional expenses. Going to a possible paper-based system means that we are now buying a lot more paper for every election. There's new baggage for how we handle that equipment going out to the polling locations. There are additional expenses also, in addition to just that lease price. And along with that, as we've already had discussions, and you all were kind enough to come and look at our space, we do have concerns with our space and storage, and how we can maintain new equipment appropriately.
So it's agreed that the money's there, it's in the capital budget, and so when you're ready to.
They're ready now.
They're ready now, so you should go ahead and contact your vendors and.
You're not ready.
Well, we're ready to contact vendors. To make your presentation for the question.
But you're not ready to spend it yet.
Well, no, but I think, you know, what Craig says is of the essence, is that training period.
Yeah.
And you're going to have to start it yesterday.
Yes.
I mean, in the sense of what you're up here now asking to do.
Yes.
So that you can get their selection and then, and your training.
Yes.
And thanks for pointing out that it's a March primary.
Yeah.
By the way, ours has, has said it's May.
Yes. Right. We would prefer May.
We would.
Not an option.
So you're further behind the April.
Yes.
And we want to equip you to not be behind the April.
We would prefer that. Yes, thank you.
Was this communicated to you, this 400,000 and this 1.2, that it was still there? Although it says zero on here, it was in the capital outlays? That was not communicated?
That was not my understanding.
Well, it's great to do this there.
Yes, yes. One of the other, I'm sorry, are we, can I move on? All right. One of the other items, which is really very concerning in this contract, has to do with postage, and that is 412400. So we had requested 139,000, and the budgeted amount was 65,000. So the 139,000 is not a number that we picked out of the sky.
Presidential.
It's a presidential election. Keep in mind that postage rates have come up, have gone up. We are also, the Secretary of State is going to be sending to each registered voter in the state a voter, absentee voter request. They can fill that out and send it back to us, which they will, and then we have to mail them their absentee ballots. It costs anywhere from 100, well, it depends on how many pages the ballot is and all that sort of thing. It is going to cost anywhere from $1.50 to $2.50 to mail each of those ballots to every citizen who requests them.
And we have traditionally seen an increase in absentee voting since it was first made. No fault in 2006, our numbers have increased each election for requests by mail.
So the fact that we've been budgeted at 65,000, and I realize it's a huge jump from 45,000 to 139,000, but that's the reason why it's a huge jump, is because we know that we're going to get a ton of absentee ballot requests.
Our practice has been for things like postage, which is not very predictable.
Right.
To look at the past history, determine what seems reasonable, put that in the budget document, with the understanding that if you run short, that there'll be additional money put in. That's how we've done it in the past. Now, we can take another look at this particular one because of the changes in the equipment.
Right.
You're needing more paper.
And you're not really comparing apples to apples here, because our cycle is a four-year cycle.
Well, that was pulled from four years ago. It's, again, whatever you spend is what you're going to spend, and that's what will be covered.
Okay. Well, just so you know, it's going to be a lot closer to 139,000 than 65,000. The other issue we want to talk about is our staff, and raises for our staff. And I know that when we chatted, that there is a raise that's in here, and I believe it's 1.5%. We're really here to ask for 5%. I mean, with each passing election, the duties required of our staff continue to increase, but our staff has not. Several years ago, the commissioners actually gave us permission to hire two additional staff members, and we were unable to do so because of our space. And so that dollar amount is a minimum of $80,000 a year. We would ask that you use that money that has already, we've already have permission to use, to give our staff a 5% raise. They work, they're so dedicated, they work long hours. We gave them all the day off yesterday, for obvious reasons.
True.
And, exactly, exactly. But three of them came in and helped us out, because they knew that, they knew we were tired. And so they came and helped us out. There are very few staffs in the county that would do that. In addition, they work under stressful situations, and they have vacation blackout days, kind of like your airline, you know, reward blackout days. So it amounts to essentially two months before and after the election. If we have four elections, so that's eight months. If we have three elections, that's six months where they're not allowed to take vacation because we need them to be there. They work long, they work long hours, and we really, and they're very disheartened when they hear about raises going to other county employees. And I understand the various issues with that, but Faith and I and our board really believe that they deserve more than 1.5%, and we're asking for 5%.
I'm sure it's warranted. I'm sure it's warranted most everywhere, and you're right, Terry. Sometimes if an elected official, and it's totally under their purview to do.
I understand.
If they have money in a line item or move money, they can grant whatever percentage. I think they've all been very prudent. We've had one exception this year, or last year. But the consequence of that is, whatever they do, is the sustainability of it. And so that's something that's paramount in our minds that we key in and factor, and the 1.5% is something that we felt was doable. Beyond that, is there money in there?
They do, yes.
Okay. For whatever reason, most.
75%.
Right. Most every, most every elected official or department's come in, we've had to digress and explain this, but we did put an amount in for somewhat discretionary on your part, or on your board's part, I suppose, that would be a lump sum that you would be able to distribute. And we did that specifically so you could do just that. You may have a merit system or somehow that you want to take that additional money and distribute it. So I'd ask you maybe to look at that.
No, that's in your official salaries.
Okay.
It's already in there.
Okay. All right.
Beyond that, we would certainly have to discuss that and try to figure out the best way to achieve it.
So that 58,000 is the lump sum that we were talking about, that it's yours to distribute, however you.
Oh, okay.
However you.
Well, the difference, yeah, the difference from what your board will actually be paid. Does that make sense?
Yep, got it. Got it.
And I think it is worth noting, the vast majority of county employees have not received all these raises. The vast majority of county employees only got the 3% in 2012, only got the 1.5% this year, are only getting the 1.5% next year. I know, you know, when one or two get the raises, rumors start swirling, it seems like everyone.
Absolutely, yes. Right. No, I, yeah. No, I understand.
More in the vote you're describing than out of it.
Right, right.
I know I explained this to you two when the three of us met. An elected official can go directly to the auditor and hand a payroll and then say, here, this is my payroll. And the auditor, I understand, is bound to pay that. Now, oftentimes, probably more times than not, maybe nine and a half times out of 10, we're not even apprised of that. We don't know. So until it shows up in the sense of a shortage in a line item, or coming here and saying, in the case of the court of courts, I need $85,000 to finish the year. You know, it just takes the wind out of your sails, plus it's very stifling in the sense of any sound budgetary process. I guess, guess I felt compelled to say that. So it's not that we don't want to do this or assist you in any way, and the employees to reward them. So I think we're going to have to be very diligent in finding out how can we do this, Maureen.
And I think.
I don't know, board, please.
No, I think there are, Maureen, I think we need to look at that and see if we can maybe do something plus the lump sum. I mean, that's something, we're taking notes on everybody that comes in here, and then we're going to discuss all of it and decide kind of where we can put what. And then when we do the general budget, we take into account all the elected officials, all of the employees, and our budget just cannot handle the 5% across the board raise. What we did this year, which I think is really important for everyone to recognize, is we gave 1.5% across the board. And then each elected official has an additional 1.5% set aside in this official salaries line that's, you can use any way you'd like. If you have some meritorious employees where you feel they're underpaid, you can use some of that money to do that, but that's up to the elected officials, or in this case, the board. And that's about the best we could figure out to do because, as you know, we're still not fully recovered from the recession.
I wonder if you could take that back and look at it.
Sure.
That amount of money.
Sure.
Well, whatever, next board meeting.
And do your calculations.
Yep.
And then let us know what, beyond that, your potential shortages might be.
Thank you.
If that's all right.
Absolutely.
And the final item, I believe, that we would definitely like to speak with you about is regarding our space. As we have already talked with you, and you all were gracious enough to come meet with us and review our space, that we do have, we have serious concerns with storage and how we will store new voting equipment in addition to electronic poll books. In addition to that, as you recall from this election, we did do a trial run using our training area for voting. That went very well, and we were very happy that we were able to use room 111 across the hall for our poll worker training for that month, as that's normally the room where we train our election officials. We do hope to again implement that for the presidential election cycle. But of course, the reason why we wanted to have a test run was to see where we are going to be deficient in other areas. And it did, of course, bring some deficiencies. That large room, not only do we use it for training, but we also use it for staging, for packing equipment, for packing our election official bags, things of that nature. So we are left without that space if we use it for voting, to use as an all-purpose room in addition to our training. We do also know that the space that we currently store our voting machines in the back area, that is not large enough to store the new equipment that would be coming with a paper-based system. That equipment is heavier and a bit more cumbersome. We cannot stack that equipment without using a forklift method, which I don't believe our floors are probably certified to handle that type of a heavy equipment to come in. So we are in need of more adequate workspace for the election and for storage purposes.
Are you still amenable to looking at, again, what we discussed, that my thought was, if we could quadrant off that entire area, and I'm talking about, as you enter the Board of Elections, your glass doors, putting up a wall, a secure wall, that would go all the way over, and then incorporating all of that area that is, is it 111?
111, the old pharmacy, our storage area.
Right. If it can be, well, gutted, I don't know, load-bearing walls, of course, can't be moved. But if that would reconfigure, if we do some, some scismatics, I guess, and see if that was reconfigured, if it would suffice for all your space needs?
Maureen, is that contiguous with the loading dock, inclusive of the loading dock? Because that's going to be one of our problems with this heavy equipment. We're going to have to have a loading dock. You can't let it.
Well, I think, did you not look at the loading dock of Joanne? I thought was going to show you the loading dock, and it, because it's so, the loading dock itself is so low, that the trucks. But if that would reconfigure, if you, we do some, some scismatics, I guess, and see if, if that was reconfigured, if it would suffice for all your space needs.
Maureen, is that contiguous with the loading dock, inclusive of the loading dock? Because that's one of, that'd be one of our problems with this heavy equipment. We're going to have to have a loading dock. You can't let it.
Well, I think, did you not look at the loading dock of Joanne? I thought was going to show you the loading dock and it, because it's so, the loading dock itself is so low that the trucks-
It is a low dock, though with the little bit of a lift that even that loading dock has in addition to the ramps from the trucks that we use for delivery, it's better than the straight from the ground push. It at least gives a little leverage for, for our gentlemen who do load our equipment. A true loading dock would be in our best interest, but that is better than what we have currently.
I would like to suggest that we employ an architect to look at that space and come up with some recommendations about how we can best accommodate all of those needs. Because I don't think any of us are very experienced at, you know.
Architect.
Again, time is, time is of the essence.
We would like that. We would meet with the architect, we could tell them our needs and make it economically feasible for the county to do.
Okay.
So we could do that.
We can do that. A journal entry, we can authorize you meeting with an architect to evaluate, assess the space you currently have and all that other space contiguous and then come up with a recommendation.
That way you can talk to them because you know exactly what you need.
Right.
Which we've looked at it, but we really don't.
Can we add that to a journal entry today?
Sure. So consider that done.
Awesome. And if I may, are you still amenable to us putting in the request for the usage of room 111 for the March and the November primaries? In the meantime, thank you.
Absolutely. I was just thinking if we could gut it and make it known.
And if that can be done prior to, that would even be better.
Do we want to estimate it on that architectural contract?
I think before we would-
At least no one would.
Journal entry today is just look into the idea of having an architect find out what it would cost for them to come in and then we can make the, do the resolution or whatever.
Okay, anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying up all night long.
May I, may I interject that on behalf of the board and on behalf of Board of Elections and the citizens, I think that this was a wonderful thing today to ensure that they're going to have a right to vote and be assured that that vote is going to be counted in time with that. And we thank you.
Thank you for coming in, board members. Thank you. And also for your directors, thank you. We can, let you, as I said, we'll add it to journal entries, but I don't know that we have a, we certainly don't have just one architect, but we try to keep it local.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Ladies and gentlemen, at our sixth floor, you already have the details.
Dave, Dave Summers looked at the sixth floor.
Oh, all right. And I've worked with them before.
Yeah, so we need to post this, get him, get one architect.
I'm sorry.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thanks.
Yeah, thank you for also what you had to endure. Good to see you.
Eight o'clock when we left.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Then he went home and passed out.
I bet.
Slipped the tooth.
Awesome problem.
I heard you were making calls. It was at three or four o'clock in the morning while I was giving results.
Oh, yeah, we had a call. And then, you know, Hamilton had that problem. So it wasn't that great.
Right. Where would you like to put, you're welcome to stay for our Portage Prepares, our launch of the new areas. Where would you like that? Amy, where's the most visible place?
I'm sure it's right. You think people will be speaking right behind you.
Yes, sure.
Next to the orange flag. Is there a, do you have a-
It's getting it up there. Oh, there you go. Will that be, Amy, will that be visible enough or you want it like somewhere prominent?
Are you going to stay there to speak?
Uh, yes, or we can move.
If you want to.
You'd like, I, yeah, it would be nice to have us behind us.
Do you want to?
If you want to move over.
Sure. Till we figure this out. Yeah. Sounds good.
Are we on?
We're on.
Okay.
Is everybody ready out there? Okay. All right, well, good morning and thank you for coming. My name is Ryan Shackelford and I'm the Emergency Management Director here in Portage County. Today, we have a lot of excitement. We finally get the opportunity to officially, officially release the app. First and foremost, I want to introduce some of our speakers. To my left is the President of the Board of County Commissioners, Maureen Frederick.
Good morning.
To my right, Kathleen Chandler, Commissioner, and Vicki Klein, Commissioner, and Mr. Robert Walker, EMS and Permanence Coordinator at UH Portage Medical Center, and he's also the Chairman of our EMA and Local Emergency Planning Boards. So at this time, I want to turn it over to Maureen for introductions. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. It's a good thing I can see over this podium. Good morning. This is truly a very exciting day for us and a day that reflects a lot of accomplishments on, on Ryan's part, on anyone associated with the EMA program, Bob Walker as Chair, the Advisory Board itself, people like Amy Chika who volunteers her time as a really kind of primary PIO, that's Public Information Officer, although I know you're all media people, so you understand that. As President of the Board of Portage County Commissioners, I'd like to welcome all of you and thank you for attending this launch of the new Portage County Emergency Management App. We are very proud that it is the first app for an emergency management agency in northeast Ohio. It's, it's no secret that so many people rely on and use smartphones and tablets to communicate, that Portage County has initiated its own free app to provide one place for our approximately 162,000 residents to find important information at any time, including weather reports, daily situation reports, such as even Amber Alerts, and links to emergency information. It is a powerful tool for preparing for and staying safe in a disaster. Since 2013, we have committed, we have continued our commitment to advise and improve our social media capabilities for disaster response through our Portage Prepares program as residents' method of receiving communication rapidly changes. We will be willing to spread the word about the availability of the app. Our, our volunteers were at the Randolph Fair. They have been out in community demonstrating the technology and helping residents download it. I think we've even had, occasionally we'll have some of the EMA equipment at, at some locales like Walmart and the big box stores like Lowe's, and it'll give us an opportunity to spread the word even further. The features of the app combined with an education and information program like Portage Prepares put the county in a strong position to be proactive should we face a disaster. And we hope and pray that it will not be the case, but your Board of County Commissioners is committed to developing as many resources as possible to keep, help keep our citizens safe. The Board of Commissioners would like to thank Director Ryan Shackelford, and by the way, this is a digression, but when we interviewed Ryan, one of the things he brought up was he would like to develop an app. And I'll tell you, that hit home with all of us. Leading the project and also our thanks to the volunteers who staff Portage Prepares, our web presence and social media have also been supported and received guidance from the County Information Technology Department, Brian Kelly, under the Portage County Auditor , Mrs. Esposito, and headed, as I said, by Brian Kelly. Board?
Did you want Ryan to go over the app features first or?
Sure.
That's fine.
That's fine. And then Mr. and Bob Walker's going to speak also. Go ahead, Maureen.
Well, when we look at the core capabilities of Emergency Management Office, and the first one that populates in any FEMA website or any local emergency management agency is, is public information and warning. Outside that, you know, what, what can we do to get resources down to the lowest level possible to every citizen in the county to get the information they need to prepare themselves before, during, and after an event? And I think our public education output here in Portage County is second to none, and that is by the volunteerism of our Portage Prepares Committee and our social media groups to help get the message out during events. We sat down with, the company is OCV, throughout Auburn, Alabama, and we sat down with a Mr. Jay Baxter. And Jay lives in Hoover, Alabama, but one was neat is he's actually from the city of Ravenna and went to Ravenna High School. So he's been trying to reach out to Portage County for some time and we just happened to have the same idea at the same time. And talking to Jay, I said, "Jay, I want something that's Portage County centric, that when you download the app, you feel Portage County." I think that's evident, that as soon as you click on it and it loads, you see a great image of pictures that are taken across the county and you get the feel from Acorn Alley in Kent to our, our cornfields in Palmyra and Edinburgh. You just wanted to feel that you, this is Portage County when you downloaded it. Some of the features that were specific about it was how are we going to be more visible? How are we going to reach out? And as soon as you download, in the top left corner was the About Us section. It goes into what the local emergency management office is in charge of, who's, who's the staff, and also our chairman as well, and what we're here to do. Next to that was your daily situation report. I kind of looked at other counties across the country and the apps they've developed and what were they doing. And one I noticed in Florida was the situation report, they had constant updates or riptides and things of that nature. And we actually did that. And if you had it downloaded prior to day, you would have noticed last week during Hurricane Patricia, I had updates about wind and rain in there. Second to that was a weather radio. Below that, instead of going to Radio Shack or wherever you could be, you can get a weather radio that streams from our county office through the county internet onto the app. So you can listen to it if you're in the basement and get the weather radio. We also had our Facebook, Twitter, and Portage Repair's social media outlets that you can just click and it takes you right to the page. Department of Homeland Security has a See Something, Say Something initiative. I think it's known, it's prevalent that we do have the fear of homegrown terrorism. So if you do see something suspicious, this section in the app allows you to know where to report and where to properly report and what is exactly suspicious activity. What was something else is what can I do to get, not only solicit our agency, but a lot of the fire and police in our county? We work together daily, so we put a section in there that had every fire and police department in the county that you can go right to the link. We also put a mass notification system. So if a local jurisdiction already had a communication device, we put the link in there so the citizen, if they live in Kent, they can go to their link and upload their information to their system. There's also web links like ready.gov, Ohio EMA, and FEMA to where the, every citizen can load a family plan for their family in emergency, what they can do ahead of time from simple as putting batteries in your flashlights to make sure you check your fire alarms every year. And what was nice is when you download the app, there's a notification that comes to your phone or any kind of information that's loaded in there comes from me. A lot of apps are developed on people's smartphones every day. They come from California, Virginia, Florida. You don't know exactly who's administering them. If you download the Portage County app, it's me, we're right here in Ravenna, and we administer it and I send push notifications to your phone during an emergency, whether it be a tornado warning, a hazmat event. We also load up in the daily situation port, for example, was some time ago, we had the Ravenna Cruisin', we had all the road closures and everything else in there so where the citizen can get an update on where not to go. With road closures, we do have OGO attached to it. We want to show correlation with our state partners with Ohio Emergency Management, ODOT. So we have all the roads in northeast Ohio. If the app just closes down, slows down, you're taking 77 north towards Cleveland at eight o'clock in the morning, you know you're going to get some heavy traffic. And finally, we had the damage report. So the citizen, if we did have a tornado like we did September 10th last year, the citizen can send images of damages to their neighbor's home, their home, write to my email and it gives a situational awareness and allows us to submit those pictures to Ohio EMA for reimbursement possibilities. And then, of course, we want to show coordination with the county commissioners who approved this project, and you'll see their names, all three at the bottom. So at this time, I would like to turn it over to the county commissioners for any other statements.
This truly is exciting for the citizens in Portage County. Not only can the public access instant information anytime that they wish from their iPhone, iPad, or computer, but they can send their damage reports, pictures that will be received by our Emergency Management Office, and they can report suspicious activities as well. We again thank Director Ryan Shackelford, Amy Chika, Bob Walker, and the members of the LEPC and the EMA for their leadership and support for this significant accomplishment.
I would just like to say I'm glad to be part of this, and this is what can happen when you work as a team. As they always say, there's no I in team, and it took many people to put this together. And I would also like to thank everyone that was involved. I don't know if Patty was mentioned, but she certainly should be mentioned. Amy Chika was mentioned already, especially Director Shackelford. As Maureen said, I was not here when he was first hired, but that was one of his goals and it's finally come to fruition and I'm sure he's very pleased with it, and so are we. And I downloaded mine as soon as I could and I love it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bob Walker and the Chair of the LEPC Advisory and the EMA Advisory as well. And it's been a very exciting time to be walking this path through the last two years with Ryan since he's been on and the whole team with this new cutting edge, and he certainly has walked it with us, so we appreciate that. So it's perfect timing with our emergency preparedness and it's a great service to our community and our county that this application is, is available to us. Social media definitely has taken a forerun in this, and so we want to thank all those people that's been out there to help us move this forward, especially with the news media. So news media, thank you for coming today and helping us share that word out. I'll personally be standing at the door to make sure you have that loaded on your phones. But we also want to say, yes, we also want to say out gratitudes. And the gratitude is actually Ryan for your foresight when you first came here. It's been two years of fruition, but it certainly has come a long way and it's done. So we can mark that off your list, but it's a great accomplishment for the county. I also want to thank the EMA Advisory and LEPC members who have, is a multi-disciplined team that have helped us walk this walk with Ryan. I want to thank the Board of Commissioners especially for authorizing and caing for us to keep moving forward with this project. And also want to thank the Portage Prepares, which is made up of a group of people as well. So Ryan, your staff, and all those who are involved, thank you. So there's the gratitudes. And we also have Facebook and Tweet, Portage Prepares talks about that. Make sure you become part of our great accomplishment. Thank you.
Thanks for all the-
You're welcome.
Also, we will miss if we didn't mention Jim Alward, who is in the back of the room, who is-
Yes.
Helps us countless times with EMA and LEPC and is always there. And he, he did go as far as even providing the duct tape this morning. But no, he's very resourceful and very helpful. Thank you. I think that pretty much concludes. Do you have some concluding remarks?
We have to ask for questions from-
Oh, sure.
If there's any closing, we'll go ahead and open it up for questions.
Okay, I have a question. So the app was funded by the OEM, Social Projects Grant?
Yes, there was a grant available and I believe initially the total cost is $6,000.
Total cost is $6,000.
And the county, three of that.
So it was a 50-50 grant, 50 matched, so the county matched $30,000 and then the total project was $6,000.
Yeah. And in addition to that, Ryan, I believe it's going to cost about $2,400 or $2,500 a year to maintain it.
Yeah, as you know, Apple and Android platforms change every six months, so to keep that updated, we do have recurring yearly charges of $24.95. That just keeps it updated with iOS 8, 9, 10 as it grows.
Whatever that means. Any other questions?
If people download this, how far out does it work? I mean, if you've got people traveling with smartphones all the time, so they can keep track of what happens if they're on the road, can you track what's happening?
Wherever they're going. Yeah, as long as they have cell phone internet coverage, they'll be able to download the app and actually they'll visit it. Now the weather, if you do the location services, the weather stays with you, so you'll have your current location. But then also, if you click the Portage County tab, it's specific to Portage and then you'll get a radar. So your current location doesn't show you the radar, but Portage County Radar is always on the phone. They do local, regional, and national radar.
So in case of an emergency, like you were saying, if you kept this on your phone and you're, you know, sheltering in place in your basement and you still, hopefully still have cell service, you can get radar as well as the national weather service.
Yes, yes, you'll still get our weather radio dispatching and you'll still get the push notifications from me.
You know, I, I've got a comment. This morning I was thinking of, after reading some of the release, a word that would sum up the essence of Portage County, and I came up with Portage centric. And I neglected to say that, but I, I heard you second, so, which is wonderful. So it is Portage centric, I think particularly in the sense of our needs here in the county, but also having the distinction of being the first in northeast Ohio to have the app.
I think we're the third in the state.
Do you guys happen, I mean, maybe I'm not as okay.
How many people have downloaded the app?
You know what? I checked right after the Randolph Fair, so this was August. We did a soft release in August and this is the final opportunity, we finally had to do the full media release. And the fair was kind of, it was, it was cold week, so we had not so much traffic that we wished at our booth, but we had after that over 300. at our booth, but we had after that over 300. So, and it was a really soft release, just as someone came in, we talked about it, so. I'm actually hoping to hear back from the stats today of how many we have downloaded now.
Maybe you could get back with them, Ryan, and let them know.
Yeah, sure, sure.
We have contact information.
Or call anytime. We'd be happy to give you any information.
Do you have a target? When you've downloaded, do you think, you know, what's your market saturation or success level?
162,000.
162,000.
You really, everybody has a smartphone.
Well, I understand that. We've kind of learned that at the fair was, you know, the general idea that everybody has a smartphone wasn't necessarily true, but a large portion does. So we try to meet, whatever way you receive the information, everybody's different, whether you just love it on Facebook, Twitter, you like apps, you like reading a newspaper. I love reading a newspaper. I actually personally don't have a Facebook account, but I do it for work. And I love the old, just the way of reading a newspaper. So you got to, we try to meet everybody's needs. And as it adapts, so five or 10 years from now, the apps aren't cool anymore, and they have our smartphones, and we'll adapt with it.
That's it? Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Excellent, excellent, Ryan.
Thank you for coming.
You're a very gifted speaker, Ryan. Do we have any bids for this?
Board of Commissioners and Ryan and Bob, can I get one? A formal picture of all of you together standing.
Oh, sure.
Okay, Ryan, stay there.
Maureen? We have Patty and Jim.
Come on, Patty, hey. Okay, move in. Last one, hold on. Bob, stand behind Maureen, or stand between Maureen and the blue. Maureen, stay where you're at, or Patty, get behind Maureen.
You want to step in, Maureen?
That's all right.
I want you to like move so we can see the banner. That way, yeah, exactly.
Don't interrupt the duct tape.
There you go.
Come forward. Patty, come forward. Bob, come forward a little bit. Let me get a couple, make sure everybody, they're open.
I always ask if you get my insight.
A lot of the media, it wasn't able to handle that.
There you go.
Well, you know, I have, I have three and eight both on sometimes. I don't know which one it was.
Oh, thanks, Bob. Thank you. Would you like us to pick that up just today, and then you can take it back?
I can take it back now.
I think he thinks we're going to steal it, but it probably works. Thank you very much for attending. Thank you.
Ryan, I think this is your.
Would you like us to pick that up just today, and then you can take it back?
I can take it back now.
I think he thinks we're going to steal it, but it probably works. Thank you very much for attending. Thank you.
Ryan, I think this is your.
Ryan, I think this is your.
I'm sure you'd be interested in seeing this.
This is what Terry put together for me from, they had referenced in the meeting when they came. We decided to, by journal entry today, contract with an architect to come in and do the preliminary. Should that be Dave Summers?
That's fine with me.
Well, you know, he came and did six.
Todd said he might have some ideas already about talking or what.
Do you have, but he can talk. Whenever the architect comes in, he has to talk to Todd.
You know, now that I think about it, we usually do ask Joanne accordingly, so we should, ask Joanne to get him ASAP.
Sure.
And to coordinate. Thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thank you. We should ask her to get him ASAP and coordinate it with Terry.
Jim, you staying or you coming out or no? You staying or? Terry, not.
Am I saying?
He still wants your car washed? I don't know if you're going golf.
You still want your car washed? That's what I heard.
Oh, that's funny. Who does all this?
Please, I'll next time you're done.
Yeah.
All right.
Are we all just, we're all. Oh, all right.
All right, I gotta sit up here all day. You know, I got, I got an extra few layers of stuff.
Open the.
We'll take your jacket off.
Well, I am. Ryan, we, by journal entry earlier, we approved some of the items from your request. There was one, one thing on the.
About the hiring of a person.
Right, that we clarified, if you would.
Okay, that's no problem.
Go ahead, Vicky.
Well, I think there was some confusion. I thought in the meeting we were going to hire a full-time person, and we don't know the hours yet because 911 is up in the air, but I thought they were going to do some 911 work and some EMA work, you know, to your plan, plan work, if you hire a full-time person. And then you said, no, you and Patty were going to do the 911. So I don't know if I just misunderstood.
And I may not have, I probably didn't describe it well enough. The game plan was to hire an actual full-time emergency management staff member, and then me and Patty, we're going to continue divvy up the 911 work like we are today. And that was, I guess, the main goal.
Until, like next year, Denise mentioned that you're going to keep track of how many hours for.
We'll have to.
Whatever. And then can some of the 911 work be assigned also to this third party in case it's needed?
Absolutely. Just, I guess, accounting may get difficult trying to keep track of hours here and there. But for ENPG, for the grant, we have to submit a time sheet and hours distributed out. So we'll have to keep track of 911 hours in the future. The problem is, we just don't know exactly what that's going to look like. So hopefully, I mean, I know it should be less because the project's done. The next gen 911 project's in place and implementing. We'll do our monthly reports and the MSAGs, which come and go. So it should decrease because we spent a lot of time building this next gen 911 project, but.
So the planning will go all to this person that we want to hire?
Strictly emergency management, strictly the ENPG grant. But if we wanted to divvy out, if we needed to delegate down, then we could.
But you're going to be intricately involved in that planning, because again, I was conveying to both Kathleen and Vicky, our conversation when you stopped in my office, saying that you wanted not to use a consultant, but wanted to do the planning.
And unfortunately, you had to leave the EMA advisory board on Wednesday early to come back from here. But after that, we appointed a planning core group to come together. Representatives, we had Bill, Red Cross, we'll have Red Cross, and I know we will. Sheriff's Office, of course, and a few other members, Health Department. So we did appoint that core committee, so I'm getting ready to do those meetings.
Okay. And you'll, you'll be intricately involved in that process?
Absolutely. As we said, the new hire, probably even beyond a degree or emergency management experiences, I want to make sure he can stand in front of stakeholders and facilitate the meeting and be comfortable. I think that's, especially when it comes to planning and these 911 facilitating these meetings, some of them aren't easy. So as long as I got someone that's confident and that can stand in front of a group and get the objective that needs to be done, done.
There's only one other thing, and it probably raised a concern with me, I don't know more so, but I did bring it up when we came back. The young lady that made the presentation, and then I think it was with a gentleman, it, as she spoke, it seemed to me that she was, I call it proprietary. And I just wondered how all that evolved, how, you know, they, did they come in on their own volition? Did they come with the, isn't there a person from the state there?
Ohio EMA, since we have the regional offices, they're going to attend our meetings now. I like to be at LEPC and EMA.
Which is fine. But I just wondered how, how that evolved.
Ruth, she came, Manaway PD, Hoyle West contacted me and said, and she's big in Crestwood High School right now. And he said, hey, I've met with this lady, her name's Ruth, and I've actually known her from when I first came on. She contacted me. But she's big in reunification, this emergency preparedness, and getting families back together during disaster. He wanted to bring her to LEPC, and I was like, well, that's hazmat, it doesn't really make too much sense, but it makes sense in the emergency management realm, since most of this comes from FEMA directive. And he goes, okay, can she come to the EMA advisory board? And I said, absolutely, we can always have someone come in and talk about the project. I think what fell to the crack was me relaying an information to Patty to put it on the agenda. Because I honestly, it was text messages and phone calls, and I was like, okay, and then probably got tracked off somewhere else. But that's, that's pretty much how she was invited, and she came with Hoyle, and Hoyle was there when, when they came on Wednesday.
What I'm wondering, I should cut to the, is she actually selling a product?
You know, I.
I mean, I, that was hard for me to distinguish.
It was, I think, honestly, I think it was a little bit of both. Obviously, she was trying to, I mean, she wants to market her business, but she did talk about how it's free to police, and the overall message for her was, this is what we're trying to do, this is important to me in the active shooter realm.
Right, and it came through.
And emergency preparedness.
I'm just wondering, though, the applicability, if we need to somehow reach out or keep in mind when we do that, there are other probably vendors, if I can call them that, that may have a service that we probably should extend the same.
Oh, absolutely. I, there was no, I guess, reach to purchase. There was, there was.
No, no, no.
None product. It was just to learn about reunification. And if, if we were to decide, I think that's more of a local jurisdictional kind of example where Manaway PD and Manaway FD and Crestwood local schools are in that system, but I don't think the rest of the county is, and Ravenna's looked at it. I wouldn't see it from a county perspective, purchasing it, but that wasn't the goal on Wednesday, was to purchase or look at a vendor, but just to learn about the process in itself.
No, I didn't think it was. I just wanted to, maybe I'm just, whatever, for so many times, if we do something like that, that we have.
Have it on the agenda.
Well, yes, that was mentioned to me on my way.
Apologize.
But, and I won't say by whom, but anyway, I'm just saying to give others that might have a service to render, to sell, the same opportunity.
We, we always, with LEPC and EMA, we always open it up to presentations. I know the one time we had veterinaries there, the veterinarians from across the county, invited them to come. And then this time, we had Ruth. And then LEPC, we've had Kurt and then Matt do presentations. So we're always looking for a presentation. So we'll always open the door to anybody that's, that's relevant to emergency preparedness and emergency management locally.
Okay, that answers it.
So I do apologize if there was any issues or concerns with that. I apologize. And then it wasn't on the agenda. That is my fault.
Well, thank you. That was just really very well done.
Okay.
Yes, we're all very proud of it.
And thank you for today. That was, I thought that went very well.
Yep.
No, it did.
Is there anything I need to do to move forward with whatever was approved or further discussion?
Are we going to talk about the full-time, part-time, whatever? I mean, we've, we've decided it's going to stay under EMA, that's for sure with the elementary.
So 911 is staying with EMA?
Yes. Yes, yes, we did do.
We approved, uh, Patty's job description as a DAFT four.
It's a DAFT four.
I think I said, everything else we approved. We just had a.
Was it additional?
No, it was a DAFT four, step two, I believe.
It's the next, yeah.
The DAFT four, wasn't it?
It was the highest one that you gave.
He said DAFT four, but it was like the first two steps, so she has room to grow over time.
Whatever you recommended is what we.
Okay.
And the, just the.
The only piece that we just do is the.
So the planner is, in essence, that position is full-time. However, we slice and dice it later.
Well, you've been helping design exercises and a lot of the yearly things we have to do, either LEPC, EMA, and then 911.
We have so many variables now that we just don't know.
Well, we have to do annual reviews of plans each year. And I, Michelle from Ohio EMA, who was at the meeting on Wednesday, actually noted that our LEPC plan that we submitted on October 7th is one of the better ones in northeast Ohio.
Good.
So she was, she said it was excellent, reading through it. And we did the full revision. We sat down, and it was boring. We had about seven meetings, and we went from beginning to end and just rewrote our plan.
Oh, that reminds me, we, we talked about and thought that EMA might have a copy of it, when you're talking about a plan. This is.
The safety thing?
Yeah, the safety response and procedures to follow in a, if an issue should come up in this building about.
There's an emergency in this building.
Right, if we had an emergency, it was more of, not necessarily, but maybe a citizen or someone coming in here.
Just something kind of.
Yeah. There is a procedure. I, I believe we have a written procedure.
Actually, I think, I can't remember who I spoke to, but it's usually called a continuity of operations.
Yes, that's it.
I cannot remember who I was talking to. I will, COOP, they all call it COOP.
Yes, COOP, you're right. No, you're right. Remember yesterday I said, I know there's an acronym, or there's, there's something, a COOP.
So you know that one exists.
Well, no, actually, yes, there is one.
There was one, absolutely. So, what's needed, I'll, I'll, let me think, I'll, I'll see if I can find one in my records, and I'll find out who I was talking to, and then if you want to sit down and revisit it and make sure everything's accurate today, if we can.
Yes, well, the people that were here were asking, when we mentioned we have one, if they could read it. So that's really the only thing we'd have in existence right now. And I, I don't know, I mean, where did we leave that? Were we going to Joanne or something? Were we going to ask someone?
Imagine there would have to be a copy of it here.
Get it off the shelf and dust it off?
Nobody seems to know.
You may have a copy.
Yeah, I think Joanne probably does, but you have one out there. The COOP plan, you're right, I remember it being called that now. Because then there was that usual, oh, it's a chicken coop, it's a.
Okay, so we'll, I guess we'll later discuss on the extra position and.
Well, we should decide and make a journal entry.
Yeah.
We've, we've already decided.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll add that to journal entries today.
Thank you very much.
So the job description, I'm trying to think of a way out of.
I.
You want to make sure with Janet.
It'll have to be revisited. Only one we have in our record is a deputy director. I've reached out to some in county already because they have planners per se on staff. I was like, can you send me an example of a job description, and I'll tailor it to what we're exactly, we're looking for.
Okay.
And I'll have one, I'll present that, and we'll get that approved, and we'll start the steps.
And you'll work with Janet on the job description.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, that's essential.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
We got something else?
Well, that's those resolutions.
Oh, really?
Oh.
This one you're safe.
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
That's yours.
Thank you.
Kathleen is, if you want to.
The people that were here were asking, when we mentioned we have one, if they could read it, so that's really the only thing we'd have in existence right now, and I don't know, Amy, where did we leave that, were we going to Joanne or something, we're going to ask someone?
Imagine there would have to be a copy of it here.
Get it off the shelf and dust it off?
Nobody seems to know.
You may have a copy.
Yeah, I think Joanne probably does, but you have one out there.
Okay.
The COOP plan, you're right, I remember it being called that now, because then there was that usual, oh, it's a chicken coop, it's a-
Okay, so we'll, I guess we'll later discuss on the extra position and-
Well, we should decide and make a journal entry.
Yeah.
We've already decided that we're going to have it.
Yeah, so we'll add that to journal entries today.
Thank you very much.
So the job description, I'm trying to think of a way out of, you want to make sure with Janet?
It'll have to be revisited, only one we have in our record is a deputy director, I've reached out to some in county already, because they have planners per se on staff, I was like, can you send me an example of a job description, and I'll tailor it to what exactly we're looking for.
Okay.
And I'll have one, I'll present that, and we'll get that approved, and we'll start the steps.
And you'll work with Janet on the job description?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's essential.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
We got something else?
Well, that's those resolutions.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
This one is safe.
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
That's yours.
Thank you. Kathleen is, if you want to.
This is your answer, is it?
Yes, I didn't write that. I like that note.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
All right, I make a motion to amend to the General Fund 2015 Annual Appropriation Resolution Number 1409, for when adopted December 11th, 2014.
Second.
Any further discussion, if not, we'll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
A motion to amend the Non-General Fund 2015 Annual Appropriation Resolution Number 140942, adopted December 11th, 2014.
Second.
Any further discussion, if not, we'll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
A motion to amend the Non-General Fund 2015 Annual Appropriation Resolution Number 140942, adopted December 11th, 2014.
That's the same number, should it be the same?
Yeah, should be the same, because it was due under the non-
Okay, okay. Second.
Any further discussion, if not, we'll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
A motion to cash advance from fund, this is blank to blank, in case it's needed before the end of the year.
Second.
Is there any further discussion, if not, we'll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Yes.
A resolution to approve a transfer from fund blank to blank, in case it's needed for the end of the year.
Second.
Any further discussion, if not, we'll call.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes. Yes. That's it. I think, and we added to the journal entries today, the-
We have to do, we have to do the jobs and family services things yet, and then we're done.
Well, that's what's happening, about 1:30.
Yeah, but do we want to do it now?
No, is she coming out this afternoon?
Oh, it's 12 o'clock already, never mind, we'll do it this afternoon.
What are you going to say? Ray, come on. Oh, yeah, seriously, you need something? Okay, all right, we will recess for lunch.
I'd like to go into executive session for the first five items. No, that's okay.
Is there a motion for executive session for personnel?
I saw move.
Second.
We'll call, please.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
And it's for hiring?
Personnel, yes, personnel, hiring.
We have to be promoting.
Promoting, promotions and hiring.
That didn't take long to get done. Okay, oh, we'll ready to exit. We should exit.
Some move.
Second.
We'll call, please.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Your action?
Yes, I'm going to ask, there is. We are recommending hiring a JFS fiscal administrator, and Kelly Jo will give you the details of who the jar is being offered for. We are, just recommending, we are accepting the recommendation to hire an income maintenance aid to, full-time position, and again, Kelly Jo will give you particulars, we are promoting a PCSA supervisors, that's support services, and Kelly Jo, we're promoting it to social worker three, to have supervisor position, and Kelly Jo will give you details on that, not in a real privilege, I agree, and we're also creating a childcare certification specialist position, and that one's going to be posted.
Yes.
Yes, and that, right now, I think is, is it on?
A3D?
Yeah, on anything in central session.
We have to do, oh.
No, we're in open session.
Okay, do we do the request to post the social worker three?
That's the first one, an open.
That's open session, so, okay, sorry.
So nothing goes with E?
No.
Okay, Kelly Jo.
So, because we are creating, or you approved the creation of a childcare certification specialist, I'm requesting to post that position?
It would make perfect sense.
Yes.
Okay, okay, a board?
Yes.
Yes.
And then I'm also, go ahead, I'm also recommending to post the social service worker three position, that is going to be vacated by the promotion of an internal support services supervisor?
Certainly, follows sequentially.
Yep.
So we will add that to journal entries.
Okay. Okay, then I just have a few directors' updates, I won't keep you long, I had committed to bringing you the agency data report once a month, so I won't go down through all of the detail on that report, that should be in one of your attachments, it's the August, September data report. Okay, just a few high points on that, in our customer service center, it's at the bottom of the first page, in the public assistance division, we did see an increase of about 200 new clients in our lobby, in the month of August, we served 2,008, and then in the month of September, 2,213. On page two, again, just some high points, since I just recently went over that, in our Ohio Means Job Center, in the month of August, we served 222 customers, and if you can see in the month of September, 326, so an increase of about 140 more residents from Portage County. And then on page three, in our children's services division, child protective services, it's good to see that our children in custody reduced by two, so in August, we had 173 children in custody, in September, 171, and that line right below that, APS, our adult protective services referrals, we also saw a reduction in those adult protective cases. In September, in August, we assigned 16, and in September, 12, so that's good news.
Do you have anything to attribute that to, Kelly Jo? No, it's just-
No, and Tammy Devine had said, oftentimes in years past, August in child welfare was a month where they received a lot of high referrals, so this is unusually, this is unusual for the month of October.
Okay.
The third page, I just wanted to point out, child support, and again, there's no grave difference, but I don't think I honed in on that much last time, the total clients seen in the customer service center in the riddle block at child support, that reduced by 60 clients as well, and then we dispersed about $1.975 million in child support payments in the month of September. And then Commissioner Frederick, last meeting, asked me about the Medicaid expenditures.
Oh, yes.
We have approximately 29,000 residents on Medicaid, that very-
29,000 in this county?
Mm-hmm, 29,000, and if you look to your very last page of that report, our administrator in public assistance was able to get this data from the Medicaid.Ohio.gov website. In Portage County, year-to-date, from January to September, there's been about $166 million spent on Medicaid expenditures, just for Portage County residents alone, so there's a lot of Medicaid dollars being spent on Medicaid, comes directly from the federal government, of course, but that, you know, attributed a lot to the Affordable Care Act and the expansion, so I did provide a website there, if you want to share that information with anybody.
Are they, are people that would be, at least when they're not on Medicaid, are they pretty much people that have no, no coverage at all?
Children, whose family would not have any coverage, the age-blind and disabled population, and Medicaid also serves as a secondary insurance to those on Medicare, so some of the population receives Medicare as their primary, and then Medicaid as their secondary.
The 29,000, I would have guessed that.
Yeah, do we move on to that?
Sure.
Okay, the second, to B, there's no attachment to that, I just wanted to provide you with a brief update, we attended, or I attended a Canton District Directors' meeting on Tuesday with the other 20 directors in our district, and I spoke months ago about what's coming up with shared services in the public assistant arena, where the 21 counties are going to work together to take the applications and processing phone calls, so it looks like at the February, March of 2016, that we're all going to be receiving, courtesy of the state, a digital imaging system in which to start sharing documents, and this should take off in the spring of next year, so we're happy for that transition to finally occur. To C, I gave you a pretty decent packet on APS initiatives, months ago, I think you were aware that the state of Ohio afforded counties the option to apply for grant monies up to $50,000 to introduce AP, or adult protective initiatives, so at that time, we sent a letter of intent, we received our first $10,000, and now, we are applying for additional $40,000, and what we need to do to get that money is to establish a memorandum of understanding with specified county community partners, so that MOU packet, if I could just draw your attention to page three of 11, Kathy Ruffner, who is the supervisor for adult protective services, has been in the community the last two weeks, trying to get the support of the sheriff, the county coroner, our prosecuting attorney, and our probate judge, just to say they support this initiative moving forward, and with that, with that support, we're going to move forward with establishing a task force to address the needs of our elderly population, so I just wanted to make you aware of our intent as we move forward.
Oh, you mentioned that, approving Judge Andrew, yes, Judge Brogan was in for his majority, and he was very complimentary about the relationship, yes.
Children's service.
Yes, very, very much so.
Okay, thank you.
And while we're talking about that kind of thing, something else you mentioned made me think, we're in the budget process now, budgetary hearings, and it occurred to me whenever, yeah, are you able to support the senior center?
We are supporting it now.
Okay, I know, July, I just wanted to make sure.
At this current time?
To us.
No, we're good in sustaining our funds to them at this time.
Great, thank you.
So, I just wanted to make you aware of those initiatives, the first meeting will be in January, we'll keep you posted, so if you would like to attend, we welcome you. And then to D, Foster Care Holiday Party, there's a red flyer there, every year, we try to have something for our foster parents and children, this year, it's going to be held on Sunday, December 13th, at Kent Lane's bowling alley, so that will be for the foster parents and the kids, there's a letter attached, we are asking for employees and community members, if they want to financially donate to that event, we're encouraging them to do so, and we-
Would you make a check there?
No, and I will, can I give you specifics on that, to give the line? So in addition to the holiday party, this wasn't in your packet, sorry, Amy, I got inundated with stuff. Kidding, sorry. We are also doing our annual presents for kids campaign, and that's for children who are in foster care, so again, we would be soliciting any donations for those who want to donate Christmas presents to children in foster care.
Can we just give them money, or you have to buy the gift?
Either or, I can give you more specific, as far as, we're going to pass out bulbs, we're going to ask the children what their interests are, they're going to put them on little crisp paper Christmas balls, so if you want to purchase a present, we can give you a bulb, and you can buy for them, or you could also donate money, but if, I can get you details if you wanted to donate money, okay? So that was the Foster Care Holiday Party, and our presents for kids, and then the last item there, I'm sorry.
Could I, if you mind, on the ball, if, for instance, they wanted a certain gift, can you put the price, so we know how much to donate? In other words, if we take a ball, and they want something that costs $12 or $15 or whatever, so that we know how much to donate?
You want me to ask them to do that?
No, I don't, I just wanted to see if it was there.
No, it's not there, it's not there personally.
We can just give a gift, and then if it's not used for one, it can be used for another.
Correct.
But if, okay, I see, just make a contribution, use it any way you want.
Right.
For a kid not to get something.
Right, well, we'll make sure, all kids will be represented by a ball, and we will not allow any child to go without a gift.
It's like the tree at church, when you take one of those.
But I know, you know, if you would donate, say, not the $12, $12 would be wonderful, but if a kid wants something that costs, you know, $29.95, and you only go up for $12, so something's-
Well, if you ask us, we'll price it for you, so if you want to make sure.
We're just giving them money, I'll give them money, and you can make it stretch as far as you can.
That would be great.
If you need to come back, you can.
You should have said that.
That sounds like a fair approach.
The last item is just a flyer, and that is our annual employee holiday event, to be held on December 16th, at Maplewood Career Center, that's an after-hours dinner, that our employee enhancement works to support all year long, and so that's really good for employees and morale, that they're able to come together in celebration of the holidays, so you are all welcome that day, and we'll remind you when we get closer, if you'd like to stop by, but we wanted to make you heard.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lots of information.
Yes, you have everything you need?
Yeah. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mayor Braska.
Thank you.
And you guys knew early, didn't you? Before the record was due.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, I read that, or I was aware of that before I was-
Yeah, before anything else.
Excuse me.
How are you?
How are you guys?
Nice to see you.
Very nice to see you all soon.
Good morning, or good afternoon.
Yes, everyone sign in to you.
Would you all like to come up, or as many of you, certainly bring a chair up, so we can-
We need to do journal entries.
Journal, maybe?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I'll make a motion that we put the journal entries. Oh, is there a second for journal entries?
Yes, second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Embracing to a journal.
Second.
Yes, second. Andy, was there anything else before we adjourn?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And we're adjourned, and we will now have the Transportation Improvement District, the TID. Mr. Darwish, are you leading the charge, or Wiki, or Heather?
I would be more than happy if Mr. Darwish led the charge. After all, Mr. Darwish is the one with no money.
Yeah, yes. Yes, Andy had sent me an email about information that came, and said Mr. Darwish has asked for it, and I said, fine, just follow his lead, because he knows.
Well, good afternoon, my name is Mo Darwish, with the GPD, just for folks here in the room, never met me before, we're basically managing the TID, helping the county manage the TID, and create a TID, which is the transportation improvement district. Now, I want to say one thing, this meeting is for the board of the TID, not for the county commissioners.
Yes.
So the county commissioners, they feel free to leave, help yourself, because this is a TID business.
Okay, okay.
But you're more than welcome to stay, anyway.
We're the public.
I'm sorry?
We'll represent the public.
That's what I said, you're more than welcome to stay. Now, with the TID, I just want to go through, I think the commissioners already saw the presentation before, I think we have a couple new members, just for everybody's sake, if you, basically, if you don't mind, please stand out your name and who you represent, so everybody knows who's who, and who you're presenting, and who appointed you, if you don't mind.
Sure, Brad Earhart, Portage Development Board, was appointed by the county commissioner, thank you.
Thank you.
McKee Marazzi, county engineer, appointed by the county commissioner.
Mayor Braska, mayor of City of Streetsboro, and I guess I inherited it.
Just love your mission.
Representative Sarah L. Tratt, who represents the northern strip of Portage County, and Speaker Cliff Rosenberg, appointed.
Hi, I'm Claudia Amrin, I'm the general manager of HARTA, and the Frischers, appointed.
And I'm John Eifler, state senator for the 18th District, I was appointed by the Senate President Keith Faber.
Jason Carlton, trustee of Manaway Township, also vice president of Portage County Township Association, and representing Portage County Township Association.
Sorry, I missed a few moments.
Okay, now, typically with the TID, this is the first order of business, we're supposed to have an agenda, but I think, Maureen, Maureen or Deborah? Deborah is on leave, or she's off, we didn't get a chance to do that.
We have the- We have an agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it, I will apologize, I don't have that.
So I guess no one has it, right?
Okay, this is what I emailed yesterday, so they put it into the agenda format.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want copies for everyone?
Yes.
Yes, they need to, because we have to go through a session here, where we have to, basically, we have the board, we have to elect the chairman of the board, and then
we have to elect the chairman of the board, and then we have to have a treasurer. Because when I go through the presentation, I will share with you how powerful this TID is, and how the board technically operates. So you guys spare me a few minutes here, just to make sure we get things in order. And we all voted that Mr. Zumba will take notes, correct?
You were voted in, huh, Andy?
I don't know if you remember the first meeting when I said I was still working for Mo?
You're still working for Mo, okay.
Some things never change.
Things, things never change. For our state, State Senator, are you familiar with the TID, Transportation Improvement District?
No.
No, okay, why don't we go through like a short, part-time presentation? So you would know, what are you involved in, and either you want to thank the Speaker of the House, or the Senate President? Even say congratulations or condolences, you'll find out. Basically. Give me a hit, enter, okay. Go through this, we want to do this, go through this, okay. Basically, the Transportation Improvement District was created by the state legislators under House Bill 114. You receive funds, ODOT receives funds from the DOD, okay? And then they receive around $3.5 billion. The, the purpose of the TID is to promote infrastructures for your community in Portage County. And those projects that they promote, and they seek funds through the House Bill 114, they have to be related to job creation. If you don't have the job creation, don't waste your time to apply for TIDs. With the, the county commissioners basically have the authority statewide to, to create a TID under Ohio Vice Code 5548.02. And, you know, in order to, to register with the TID, TID must have a specific project that will come later when you apply for it. Sometimes ODOT will have the, the application somewhere around May. And these days change, sometimes May, sometimes September, but historically, they've been seeking applications for projects in May. But we'll see, beginning of the year, we'll have an idea what's going on. We'll go through this one really quick, because we had that presentation, as I said, with the commissioners before. There are two options to create a TID, you know. The first one, basically, you can look at the list for 12 members, and to be honest with you, who wants to have a board of 12 members? Nothing will get accomplished. The best way to go is the short way, basically with seven members, so we can get more accomplished. As you can see on the board over there, five members appointed by the, the county commissioners, one non-voting member appointed by the speaker, and another one by the president of the senate. Next one, please. Responsibility to the TID, and also one of the, one of the things we're going to be talking about today is about bylaws, have an official seal. Basically, you are, under Ohio Vice Code, you're a public entity, it can be very powerful. You can sue, you can get sued. We'll talk about that later, to talk about liability insurance for the board members. It, it is like, as I said, a public entity, you can purchase, you can exchange, you, you can go through an N-Domain, you can create a TIF. It, it is a powerful tool that thanks to legislators to create, you know, to have an agency like this, working hand-in-hand with the county commissioners. As I said before, you know, they can have right-of-way agreements, they can sign contracts, they can hire professional services, receive funding from different sources of funding, you know, the county, the TID, the DOD, Ohio jobs, and any source of public funding available. They can create TIFs, they can issue bonds, all different things that you have to be careful what to do, you know. It can be scary at one time, if you don't have the appropriate board. Those are some of the TIDs created in, in Ohio, I'm not sure if we updated that, so, because we have to need, we have to add Portage into that, that's been done. When was that?
It says 12 and 13.
Yeah, I cannot see. And, you know, the project types, as, as I said, you know, for, mainly for, for job creation. As I also said before, usually, there, there may, total amount of funding, you go after, basically, 10%. I think, I think they're going to change that, I'm not sure if it's in the, in the state budget, if you folks changed that, is it 20%? They were talking about making 10% or 250, 20% or 250. I think that's been changed in the last, last budget, we need to get an update with that. And then.
Oh, excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that pie set by the, by the governor or legislature, or ODOT or somebody? And is it, or is it increase or decrease?
The 3.5, it is, it is set by the budget, by, by state legislators and ODOT, working with the DOD. You know, I mean, the, the county commissioners, they already created the board, you know. We'll, we'll talk about the projects later, and then, and then register the TID with ODOT, and then apply for jobs. Now, from now on, I mean, next steps is basically, as, as a board members, with due respect to the county commissioners, I'm, I'm looking this side because this is.
We understand.
But this is that, so.
You want to be them.
I'm not, I'm not ignoring you, I just have to be careful, know who's my boss, you know, she's at home, so. But, you know, with the, with the board members, you know, the first thing is like, basically, you know, because I, I work on the Summit County TID. You have to vote for the officers, you know, whatever your folks agree on, you know, the chairman, the treasurer, you know, and then things like that. And then, we have to create bylaws, and I can help you with that, because I helped Summit County, so it can be an easy process. And then, there's going to be some kind of an agreement between the TID board and the county commissioners. Because in the future, there's going to be some exchange of funds, one way or another. So it's a good idea to have that agreement established, and the resolution passed under that, and then also we can work on it. And then the critical thing, is like, really to talk about it in the beginning, is to talk about the liability insurance. Because when, when you're in business, this is, this is the system we have, anybody can sue you, you can sue anybody. We have to protect your liability, basically, to work with the county, to create that liability insurance, which it can be under the county umbrella. But the one we did for Summit County, it cost someone around like $5,000 plus or minus. This is a liability insurance for the members. The other thing is, we have to create, you know, like anything, since you're a new agency, we have to create a letterhead with a logo, if you wanted to. And doing nothing, it's up to you. So with third, first order of business over here, we need to talk about who's the president, or the chairman, you know, who's, who's the secretary, and who's the treasurer. Because those things are going to go later every meeting, we have to get an update, what is the status? I don't want to scare you, I mean, we'll meet at the beginning, maybe once a month to get things rolling. After we have a project, the number of meetings will go down, so it's not going to take too much time out of your busy schedule. Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Is there a valid set of bylaws that we need?
Yes, sir, that's why I said we'll use Summit County bylaws. Yeah, they've already been established, we have to change it from county, county council to county commissioners, because they're a sharper form of government. Yes, sir.
What are some example projects that have been funded? You said Summit County, for example.
Okay, Summit County recently, they got the funding for, are you familiar with Row 8 and the Turnpike, where the old Boston Heights go? Our house is moving over there, as you know, and then I think Costco is moving over there. So that is, that is the project for Summit County, they, they receive $250,000. That's a typical example for this area.
Is this $150,000 used for?
You can use it specifically, but it has to be for job creation. You cannot apply.
Was it used for transportation improvement?
For infrastructure, infrastructure improvement, okay. It can be for water, sewers, signal, turntable, widening.
Does it have to be a public utility, a publicly owned utility?
Well, it has to be, yes, but you can work with the private entity, to be a public-private partnership.
Okay, so, you know, could be, I guess it can be used for utilities, like with gas or electric?
Those are private. The, the one thing also, the, the other purpose of the TID is to look at the county overall, and look at what are the future projects coming into the county, and how to promote these future projects that create jobs. You, you can look at Streetsboro, you know, the mayor city here, you can look at Aurora, you can look at Travana, you can look at Ken. Downtown Ken would have been like the perfect, like, example to apply for these kind of funds. They can also apply for track, I'm not sure if you're familiar, what are the track funds? Okay, that's funded by ODOT also, that's under the, the Turnpike, they issue bonds. Are you familiar with that? Okay, so that, that is, that is what also the track, you can apply for that, if you have like a major project, if you have a project that requires you to, for example, build and interchange for future development, you can apply for a track for that. But the main thing is, basically, the folks, the board of this, the TID, is to think county-wide, and then think about how are we going to bring everything under one umbrella, you know. You can help the local entities, city or township or village, you can help them to create a TIF, you can help them to take lead on the project, you can help them with funding. It, it is like the Cleveland House, to help the locals here.
So if we get a project, well, that, you know, we're going to create, you know, 100 jobs, and we have to extend water and sewer network, we can apply for up to the $250,000, or we can get a 10% discount on, basically, and that can be used as part of our local share?
The, the $250,000 can be used as a local share, for example, Mayor, Phil Sparkley, especially, perfectly example for you. You've got vacant lands, you want to put a road, this is typical, public-private partnership between property owners, between the county, between the city. I think you have jobs Ohio funds into that, you've got to tap into that, because you're creating jobs with that project.
I would use two years ago.
Can it always be for roads, could it also be used for rail, for airport?
For everything.
As long as it's creating jobs.
Jobs, yes.
Is there a ratio of how many jobs have to be created for each dollar, or?
Not, not really, not really, I mean, because it depends on the entity, I mean, they, they like to see, basically, like, you know, like, everybody says retail jobs are not a good jobs, I don't know if that's your right. But it's a job, and, and I think the state, they go by the numbers, you know. And then later on, when we get into, you know, to the process, have more meetings, we can talk about project specifics. Then, because we're going to have more meetings, and then we're going to solicit from the communities, that some projects, some agencies, some office coming in, or some big company, they're expanding, that they need infrastructure, so we will solicit projects from these communities. And then, as a board, you'll go through the evaluation process. And basically, it's no-brainer, we can use ODOT's evaluation process to do the same thing. Instead of taking all these projects and then sending them to ODOT, why don't you evaluate them based on your understanding of the local issues, and then send them to ODOT, and that's what we do also in Summit County.
So really, if we could, well, this would be a lot shorter term than like waiting for an AMETs grant or something?
Oh, yeah, that, you can use it the same year.
Okay.
Yeah, if funds available, you can do the same year.
So if we, if we had a project that started five years ago, we get our AMETs money, or whatever the case may be, when we get in the final year, we can actually submit for this, if it falls under that.
You can, you can almost look into it as the same schedule, or same, maybe process like issue two. You know, sort of when he's talking about schedule, you know, you apply the year before, then you can use it next year, something like that.
That's great. Can you use it for multi, multiple projects?
You can use it for multiple projects, but it has to be, again, job creation. Yes. You can use it also, different phases of the project. This year, for example, you want to put water, next year you want to put sewer, or, you know, you want to put the pavement later. If you, whatever restrictions you have, if you want to do your project in phases, you can do that, but every time it's $250,000.
I'm just thinking of, you know, I'm more or less representing the township, right, and cities, you know, are obviously where you can see a lot of this money going, but I, I need to make sure that this money can be well represented by the township.
Not, not really, it's all followed for jobs.
Sure.
I mean, Boston Heights is one of the communities that, basically, they have almost no revenues because of the national parks. I think the only business they used to have was the gas station, Row 8 and Heinz Hill. And, and then the other source of funding, they have issue on tickets for speeding on Row 8. You're not, you're not right.
You're being recorded, you're recording.
Anything you say can be held against you.
So, so I mean, if you're talking about financial distress, okay, I mean, if you, if you have property, if you have the job creation, you can apply for it. And it's up, it's up to you folks to board, you, you decide, you evaluate the project. You, you are on your own. Good or bad, I don't know.
We had eligible projects, and we, and we put them together, and we sent them up to the city, are we doing our competition at that level? Okay, so there's a limited pool of funds at the state level, and all these other counties with that green dot on it?
They will apply, everybody is fighting, everybody is fighting for 3.5, but in the same, don't only focus on the $250,000, focus on the other source of funding, how are you going to fund your entire project?
Right, the, the other.
The TIF, the assessment, the TID, the issue two, you can do that on your own, you know. Going to ODOT, going to AMETs, for example. There are a lot of sources of funding floating out there, you'll go after it to work with the private entity, to basically build infrastructure for that specific location. Am I doing a good job explaining that, or am I confusing you?
No, you're pretty good, it, it, it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I'm good, yes.
Yeah, we know. Well, what's our next step now?
Question back here.
So as a board, we might, rather than go out and identify projects, solicit proposals for projects.
What, just to give you.
Public process where we notify the Portage County unit, we're accepting proposals for projects from communities.
The best planners in the world are the ones who steal other people's revenues, so we're going to do that. We're going to take whatever we did in Summit County, make your life easier, and implement it here, and then you can tweak it, and then you can improve it. What we did in Summit County is basically, Connie Kraus, who was the director of planning, she was involved in the Township Trustees Association for Summit County, she was involved with the Summit County Mayor Association, so she attended those meetings and promoted, did the same thing, promoted the TID. In the same time, around January, February, she sent a letter for all the communities in Summit County. Look, let you know, TID has been established, it's in business, we're soliciting for a project. Please submit, but be careful, and then we attach the criteria, so they know, so they'll have an idea what are they applying for. Because you don't want, you know, projects, you know, has nothing to do with the TID, you don't want to waste your time or their time. And winding a road just because you're winding it, because it's a traffic problem or a safety problem, you, you won't be, you won't be qualified. Now, you will be, maybe if it's related to job creation, then you can bring all different sources of funding to the job. So we did that, and then as a board, you know, you got the engineer, you got everybody, looked at the different projects, evaluated, evaluated that. And then we had interviews with these communities, just to give you an example, the applicants that they submitted. City of Akron applied for like two jobs, one of them is the Interbell 59. They want to go from a three-way look-alike to two-lane boulevard. And then, part of the idea is like, when they have that land available, it's going to be land available for the medical corridor. Well, maybe, so the TID board looked at it, it's not like you build it, they'll come, we want to make sure they're coming. Also, the same, same token, we have another project in City of Conneal Falls, where, you know, like, fronts, they, they want to change the area, they want to add two more hotels, I think, again, it's the idea of like, let's build it, and you want to do it because they will come. Well, in Boston Heights, they're coming, our houses, I mean, they're putting the foundation, everything, we know they're coming. So they needed the financial resources to build infrastructure, so that's why it was rated number one. And the board did that, and went really well, worked really well with Columbus, and made funding.
So, you know, a lot of times, you, you mentioned Row 8, Costco, and I think you mentioned one.
Our house.
Okay. So those are examples of, you know, companies coming in, job creation, but in that instance, if they're already coming, could you put the financial burden on them and say, if you're already coming, why don't you pay for your maintenance improvements? Because a lot of times, the people that aren't coming, you build if they will come, type of mentality. That might be a better option, because some companies may not be able to afford it unless infrastructure is already there. Does that make sense?
Yes and no, you want to win the war, or you want to win the battle?
War.
So with due respect to all the communities, it's a competitive market. If Boston Heights, I'm sorry, Boston Heights, if they were not providing the, our house, or the wars, and Costco with incentives, probably they went up more to Macedonia. of the wars in, in Costco with incentives, probably they went up more to Macedonia, or they went down south, maybe to, on, on the new Steel's Corners?
They were like, even further south, they were like...
Seasons Road. Seasons Road.
Okay.
Okay, so, so you have a community, you need, you need the tax base, so you have to provide them for something. And one of the things called the public-private partnership, you know, they're going to build it, you're going to ask them for it a little bit, but at the same time, you have to offer them something.
Sure.
Otherwise, I mean, our, our house, I mean...
We lost them.
You, you lost them. I'm sorry, that's...
Economic development is, is just, any penny more that we can find, to try and get them in, Boston Heights offered 100% tax payment for 15 years, I couldn't touch it, couldn't even come close, and they, they actually told us they want to come to Streetsboro, but when you started putting numbers and numbers, they put, what, 650,000 square foot building?
Yeah. So, 250, 250...
You start looking at the, at the property taxes that are generated from that, if we, if we could, if we could have given them up close, maybe not as much, but as close for job, they would, they would have been with us, and, and we couldn't touch them, it's just like Aurora, Aurora is 15, or 100% for 15 years, I'm having a tough time with them. So, this is another tool for us, that we can, you know, this is that little charity we can handle, you know, to try and bring this stuff in.
It is, it's become more and more competitive, because all the communities don't want the tax bill, and especially when you have corporations like, you know, our house, or Costco, I mean, these are big blocks, it's not, it's not like, you know, Plaza or something, you don't know how that, how long they, you know, has, so, you've got to be ready to...
This, something like this could have been used for the road, behind sheets. You could, that, that the job creation, that would have helped, in, in that situation.
I'm thinking of other things as well, too, I mean, again, we have rail in the county, that might want to improve someday, we can leverage that, maybe with some commission funds, we have, we have an airport, and, you know, there might be, there might be advantages there as well, too.
Yeah.
Just, yeah.
You provide.
Anytime we can get a few more bucks from someone that's not ours, I'll go for it.
Good attitude, yeah.
I love you.
Could you see people, so obviously, this is the first time we've all kind of met together, you've mentioned Summit County has a planning and development person on their board, I mean, I'm sure some of us may have some of those skill sets, but, you know, thinking commissioners, you pointed many of the people on here, or recommendations, maybe Todd Peets with Portage County Vision Planning, he may see some of these projects coming in, or, you know, a lot of times, before companies come in, they talk to planning and development before, you know, that, that's their first point of contact, to cities, villages, townships, you know, is this feasible type of thing?
Yeah, I mean...
Kind of drawing some of that in.
Jason, if we would have had another appointment, it would have been Todd Peets.
But we can always have ex-official members attend your meeting as consultants.
Exactly, as a consultant, exactly.
Yes, and Todd would be...
Just a thought, you know, I'm, I'm just, you know, throwing it out there.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
That's a good idea, I think Todd would be more than helpful.
Yes, because I went ahead previously, and, and actually hinted, asked him if he would have been interested, I think after the first time, or second time you were here, Mo, Mickey, and kind of jumped the gun, and then, when I found out the limitations and representation, but I think he would have been excellent, absolutely.
But would he have been on the board, though, I think?
Yeah, maybe in that ex-official capacity, I think everyone knows and utilizes his
I have a question. You ready to make a vote?
I want to turn the sideline.
This is your fight.
This, I guess I'll, I'll ask the board, they, they said, they are taping and streaming this meeting, if you don't want this published to the web, we can pull it.
I mean, all, all of our meetings are...
This is, this is, it's your call, this is not the commissioners' meeting, this is your meeting, so you make that decision.
Yeah, would you rather?
You don't have to be...
I made, I made your recommendation not to be impublished, but on the other side.
Oh, well, the, the thing about being published is, if you say anything, your plans or anything, you might not want the world to know.
Right, that's right.
We should turn off the tape, there's no reason for it to be...
Yeah, I, I thought about that, but I thought we did turn it off.
But we're using it for notes.
I didn't take notes, writing.
We threw it off. Oh, sure. I mean, it's, it's... I was just thinking, in case you didn't mention something that maybe you didn't want the world to know.
Probably have more complaints now than we had initially.
Anthony, Anthony, you can bring your own little tape recorder when you do this next one.
Well, I'll tape it.